Good morning, welcome to our September 13th, 2011 Board of Supervisors meeting after our hiatus of the summer, and I'll ask Roberta to please call the roll.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Madam Chair. Yeah, before we start the meeting, I have to hand this resolution back to, and this one needs to be signed, back to Anna Benitez, she's on my staff, Anna, would you stand up, please? And Anna won't be working Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday because she's getting married on Saturday.
Congratulations. She's real nervous, that one.
Thank you for that indulgence.
Congratulations, Anna. That was inspiring, but nothing as inspiring as our next item, which is our Moment of Inspiration. And this morning, we have a very special moment of inspiration in recognition of 9/11, which we celebrated, well, not celebrated, but memorialized throughout the county and throughout our nation, and actually globally, it was well-recognized. And this morning, we have Fire Chief from Santa Paula, Rick Ariza, and also Andy Van Seiver here, that will bring forward one of the pieces from the 9/11 Twin Tower that they had at the memorial here in Ventura County. So, thank you for bringing that forward. I know Supervisor Long was instrumental in having this for us at the Board, Nettor County.
Thank you, Chair and Board and the staff. Yes, it's a great pleasure that we're able to bring you an actual artifact from the World Trade Center Twin Towers. We made application approximately two, two and a half years ago for a piece of the artifact from the Trade Centers. Firefighter Andy Van Seiver made me aware that it was available, and it was just simply a matter of making an application that it would be held in proper dedication. And we're going to have this at the Santa Paula Oil Museum temporarily until we have a new station, which is planned in the near future, and it will be on public display. And that was the only requirement, along with us picking up the tab for the transport. So, although it's rather small, it does weigh quite a bit, and it was through Andy's hard work that we were able to get a piece of the artifact from the Twin Towers.
Well, thank you for doing that. I know at the commemorative we had on Sunday, that people were really wanting to be able to see it, to touch it, to be closer to that, so that they can, you know, feel what so many did feel on that day.
Madam Chair, that is what moved me so much, to be there Sunday, and Andy was so gracious with hundreds of people who lined up and didn't want to touch it, and the whole purpose of having it was that you can touch it. And I applaud the chief and Andy and the city of Santa Paula for going after this, and I know that the hope is to be able to, I believe, put it on the fire station so people can still come and touch a piece of the tower.
That is correct.
It was very moving, people were moved by it, so. Any other part of the story there, Andy, to add?
Not really. Some of the unique things were like, when we made the actual request for the artifact, we did that two years ago on 9/11, so it was certified mail to the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, just in remembrance of that event, just time-wise, when we got first notified of the availability of it. We moved quickly in two or three days, got all the documents and the letters written, and had the chief execute, and we mailed them off, so.
And will you be able to keep that here for us today? That's for the audience and others?
If you'd like, we can leave it for the day, we can move it off to the side, and please take the time to come up and touch it and be a part of it.
What moved me, too, was to see the children, you know, for them to have a little bit more understanding, so. I appreciate that you brought this here this morning. And I think we also have our Fire Department Chaplain, Larry Maduño, who will be doing our Moment of Inspiration. Thank you for coming.
Good morning. I just personally wanted to thank the county of Ventura and Board of Supervisors for your support and allowing us to put on the memorial last Sunday, so thank you very much for that. Almighty Creator, we give you thanks for all that we have. We remember all those who died on 9/11 and their families. We ask your continued blessings on our county and on our county supervisor and all of their staff. Bring your peace and understanding to all who come here today. May we take the time to see all the many blessings that you give us each day and be thankful for them. May we be able to be you to others, and may others see you in us, and we pray in your holy name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the event on Sunday that we had at the Government Center was particularly moving and beautiful and well-organized. I know Bill Nash with our Fire Department was instrumental in that, and I just really appreciate that, and I know a lot of planning went into it, so I'm really thankful for all who did put that forward. Yes, Supervisors Zaragoza.
I was going to be part of my comments today, too, but since we are sharing that now, I also want to thank, you know, Barry and the chaplain and Mr. Nash and Laura Hernandez for an excellent, excellent remembrance ceremony that was held Sunday. And I just want to thank all our first responders and our military men and women that serve our, this great country for what they have done, and it was just an excellent, excellent program. And in 60 minutes that evening, you know, they had a special on some of the survivors of the 9/11, and then a one-hour video that this, two Frenchmen shot regarding a, they started off with a firefighter that was a trainee, and they ended up in the towers, and sharing some of the videos of the horrible moments, you know, and what happened in 9/11, so it really, really was tough to see that, but I just want to thank all of you, the first responders and our military men and women, and for the excellent program that you did the other day, and thank you so much.
True heroes. At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Powers, would you like to lead us?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice alone.
Okay, at this time, we're on to Agenda Item 5, which is the minutes of our meeting of July 19th, '26, as well as August 2nd. And I think appropriately, we could have a motion.
Okay, motion.
Do we have a motion?
We have to get back on, yes, back in, back in the saddle. There's the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and if we could all please vote. That passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda will be our Agenda Review with Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. We would request that item, Consent Items 10 and 20 be removed from the agenda. That's 10 and 20.
Thank you.
And then on regular Agenda Item 44, there's, we received a modification to Exhibit 1.
Thank you.
And we also request that we remove Item 14 from the consent agenda.
So, we'll just remove from the consent and put it on to the regular?
I'm sorry, no, we're going to remove it completely from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And I would also request that we go and remove from the Agenda, Agenda Item 41, this is one that I put on, so.
Remove it.
I am asked, yeah, remove it, not continue it, and that's Item 41.
Madam Chair, I'd ask that we poll 18 for some discussion.
Okay, for discussion.
You said 40 was option.
I polled 41.
41, 44, there's been a modification to Exhibit 1.
Okay, any other changes that we want to make to our agenda? Okay, then what we would do is have a vote to accept the agenda as we've revised it.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second from Supervisor Foy, and that gives us another opportunity to vote. Great. And that also passes unanimously, and now we'll go to Item 7, and this would be Items 10 through 26, except that we pulled Item 10, 20 from it, and 14, and Supervisor Long, is a good time to discuss Item 18.
Thank you for discussion, yes.
Board members, thank you. Item 18, I just thought, one, it's an important action before the Board this morning regarding the increase in this amount for the soft tech, software, software that we have in place, but as importantly for us to look at the accomplishments of what's already been undertaken. Oops, I didn't want to put that motion up, I want to pull the item up. If you look at 18, the, I think it's just remarkable, when you look at the, what's taken place with the conversion of the back file, and the millions of pieces of paper that have now been converted, and the savings that have come as a result of that, and the request, of course, is for the next step in this, but as we look to really improve both our going, our systems streamlined and reducing paper and using the technology, both for the efficiency of the operation, but also for the benefit to our customers, particularly here in the county and in our entire county system. I don't know if there's anyone here from IT to speak to this. There, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, CEO Powers, for the record, Mike Pettit, Deputy CIO, IT Services. I appreciate you pulling this agenda because it is a fantastic story for the county to tell. As you know, as part of our Efficient VC Initiative, we, one of the underpinnings of that was enterprise content management, and that was this war on paper at the county. And HSA has adopted that in a very significant way. We have both Barry and Melissa here this morning, and I want to give recognition to them. As you, as you know, in April of this year, we came to the Board with the first part of that project to convert six and a half million pages of paper to electronic content, and that has largely been accomplished. Our original go-live date was at the end of August. We've extended that out to the end of October to include this additional 2.2 million pages of content. And that's, as you can imagine, this is an extremely large transition to the way that HSA does business, and so beyond the war on paper and eliminating that, it really speaks to the strategic direction of the Human Services Agency. This technology will enable them to provide services at any of their remote locations because the caseworkers will have access to that information at any of those locations. So, no longer do we have to tell an individual that they need to go to a specific field office for, to receive services. It also, through training and coordination and moving towards the future, will now enable training of caseworkers to be able to handle and deliver all of the services that HSA provides to citizens. So, kind of a no-wrong-window approach, one-stop shopping for our citizens. And so, this is an extremely important project. We appreciate your support. The Board has been tremendously supportive of this effort, and we're looking forward to the future strategy. HSA has a vision to provide that service, but also other benefits to the county, reducing facility footprints. As you can imagine, just the sea of filing cabinets that this will eliminate in the organization. And then the next stage, as we've seen from a technology perspective over the last few years, mobile and what we call mobility, enabling mobile field workers to access important information in the field, this positions HSA to leverage that in a powerful way, so that their caseworkers will be able to access this information in people's homes, at their places of business, in some of the support centers that they provide services through. So, it's a critical project, I appreciate you recognizing that this morning.
Well, and you, thank you for telling the story far better than I was stumbling there to tell it, but I think this is a good news story, and I think it's one of those that would, you know, could feature on our, front of our website. It's a, it's a big step, and I appreciate HSA work on it and willingness to look at ways to be innovative and to, both with the employees and the work that they have, the challenges they have, and the whole streamlining of it, so excellent.
And I would add, the technology is transformational, however, it's not successful without the people, and again, that's a testimony to the excellent executive management and the staff that we have here at the county. This impacts 600 workers at the Human Services Agency, they're going from a world of paper to a world of electronic content, so to accomplish that as an agency is a significant hurdle, and HSA has done a tremendous job in getting that communication of that change out early and often to their people. And the champions at the top, Barry, Melissa, their executive management team, have done a great job transitioning and preparing the workforce to move into this new era, so the technology itself is the simple part, but it's changing the way we do business that is the challenge, and they're doing a fantastic job of that, so.
Great, that's good to hear.
I just, I think it's great, too, I appreciate you bringing this up, because this is just part of this whole thing the county's doing to modernize government, and we can bring it into the 21st, you know, 22nd. We're going to move this thing forward, and it's just a great step, and I appreciate one of the bigger agencies, it's more difficult with all the people to be right out in the forefront with this, because I think it's part of what I know Mr. Powers wants to see happen here in this county, so congratulations on making this happen.
Thank you, thank you.
And it is also green, which is nice to see, being able to, and when you just look at, that's just HSA, I know we just recently moved our offices and got to get rid of a couple of file cabinets, too, and how nice that is to be able to become paperless, I like your, the war on paper.
Well, you know, and just to put that into physical perspective, 8.8 million pages, which is going to be the total entirety of this effort, represents a stack of paper almost three-quarters of a mile high, so that's a significant visual impact of what this represents. Now, if we can just get the state to eliminate the over 600 forms that HSA has to deal with on a daily basis, that's the next step.
It's fun to do that, and all the realignment, right, Barry, this kind of thing, that's their first priority, right?
Thank you very much, thanks for calling us.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we go to, before we go to the consent calendar, I don't need anybody to come up, I just think it's appropriate, I'd just like to call out and mention very quickly before we vote. Item 15, the ratification to accept the equipment and other program support, I just think we really want to take a minute to thank the Ventura County Medical Resources Foundation, the National Charity League Juniors, for their support of VCMC and the Healthcare Agency Clinic System. They've been out there regularly, and I know Mr. Powers knows that, and doing that. The Resource Foundation has provided support to VCMC for over 54 years with their fundraising efforts to support the county and their families, sick children, and help them be able to receive safe and trusted care, nice and close. And the National Charity League is a joint venture between Children's Hospital in Los Angeles and VCMC, and they're dedicated to bringing quality treatment to children who become ill with cancer or blood diseases. They host creative fundraisers, they got tons of energy, it's a, it's a great way for parents, primarily mothers, to sort of introduce their daughters to this whole world of work, raising money to ensure the Ventura County children and families don't have to make that long trip all the way down to Los Angeles, it's great. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out is, on the consent calendar, Items 16 and 17, Workforce Investment Board. In this, in this era, as people ask, you know, what are we doing about job creation? This is our number-one avenue that we have here. We receive millions of dollars of federal funding, I think we have, we work hard with our Workforce Investment Board to try to help shape and keep them on track, et cetera, and just want to call out that here are two more items, but the Workforce Investment Board is, certainly has to be viewed as our arm reaching out there to try to create jobs here in Ventura County. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. It's also nice to see the Workforce Investment Board reaching out and partnering also, so it keeps growing. Okay, with that, then, of those items on the consent agenda, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Bennett. We could all please vote. Great, and that also is unanimous and concludes our consent items. Next item on our agenda is public comments. If you'd like to speak, please see that we get your blue speaker card. In the meantime, I've got three speaker cards, and our first is Jesse Luna of Bathie Avary at Steckel Park, and then after him, we'll follow Robert Moon.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Jesse Luna, and today I'm here representing myself, and I'm also here as a Santa Paula resident. I'm here to urge the Board to consider halting the process of closing the aviary at Steckel Park. The aviary is a rich community resource. There's something magical about going to the park with your family and kids and seeing all the different birds that are there, it's just something so unexpected. There's something magical about having a little family of peacocks walk right up to you, something that you might not see anywhere, anytime in your lifetime, and I want that magic to continue. I also want the community to be able to have a voice in what's going on in this process. There really wasn't, from my opinion, a lot of community input that was in this process. Give us a chance to see what the issues are and to work with the Board to see what we can do. There are a lot of people who are interested in keeping it open, and we are willing to do the work on our side to do whatever it takes, whether it's fundraising, looking at the financial issues, coming up with new ideas, to keep this resource open, so that the next generation of Santa Paulans and Ventura County folks can experience that same magical feeling. So, once again, I urge the Board to halt the closing of the aviary, give the community a chance to really take a look at the issue and to work with the Board to come up with some solutions to keep it open. Thank you.
Well, I just thank you for coming in to speak and to let you know that I've talked with the mayor of Santa Paula, and we are going to be looking at what the options are. The park is not closing, I think there's some misunderstanding, Steckel Park is not closing. The aviary, the birds are being adopted because they, some of them frankly were ill, and they needed to be adopted. The peacocks have been free and roaming free for the last 10 years at least, some people like that, some don't, but the other, the issue as to the structure itself, we are, my office and I will be working with the mayor and the council to see what options there are, so thank you.
Okay, may I add a comment? And also, I'd like to add that I have been meeting with the kind of larger community group, that's composed of community members, parents, even some of their kids, current and previous elected officials, and we're looking to see what we can do as a community to kind of work together, so I hope that you reach out to us and include us in that process.
Absolutely. The Parks Department is preparing all of the factual pieces of what the current condition is, what the operating costs are, what the challenge will be, and it will be a challenge, and I, and the mayor, and my, and... And it will be a challenge, and I, and the Mayor and my, in conversations with Council members, will be looking to the community to see what can we do.
Thank you very much.
So, I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
We had an aviary. That sounds pretty neat. It'd be nice if we could save it. Robert Moon?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Bennett?
Just a brief interruption before our next speaker talk. I've just gotten some communication from Victoria Jump, and we have an item on, Supervisor Long and I have an item on. Now, she would like to be here, but her schedule says she either needs to be, she needs to be here before 10 o'clock, and I would just like to ask if we could schedule that item before 10 o'clock when we get started. Does that work?
And which item is that, Supervisor?
It's not a time certain at this point in time. It's a policy item of us.
Okay. It's not a time, it's not a time certain?
Currently, it's not a time certain, but she, with her schedule, she's going to need that, so.
Okay.
All right. I'll let her know we'll handle it before 10 o'clock then.
We will move it up before 10.
Try to like 9:45 or so.
Okay. Sue for 9:45.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon the interruption.
Sorry for the interruption. Mr. Moon, talking about an organization, you're representing your ancestors.
That's right. You know, everything's about having skin in the game. Everything's credentialed. My credentials, my family's been here since the mid, mid-1800s. My wife's family, and both her sides about the same. So, a lot of skin in the game. My great-great-grandpa Fonzos buried in Santa Paula. Been to a resident. I've dealt a lot with Steve Bennett's office, worked with Mr., Mr. Salsito dealing with issues in your office, and been a great experience. First, I have many petitions here, and more, we'll get more. So, I'm going to hand it to your staff here.
Petitions for the, for your park. To me, it's a, I'm also a military veteran. I feel like Lieutenant Day. I look, my family, I look back to the Revolution, so. Let's get in the game. I probably hanged around too much around the Greatest Generation. I was always raised, if there's a problem, there's opportunity. Without problems, there's no opportunity. So, I really, it seems like there's such a, every time we have a problem in this county, the first thing is to retreat. As a military guy, that disgusts me, disgusts me, because there's improvised. And I tell the young group, you children today, I go, I don't see, in the generation that's running the show now, what I seen growing up as a kid, is to give, to serve, to constantly serve, to give the opportunity. There was more things to do as a child, I'm 40, I'm already 42. There was more things to do as a kid than there is now. Seems like every time we have a problem, we just close it down. Have problems with fireworks on the beach, close it down. Having problems with aviary, close it down. These are all points of interest. There's so many few points of interest in this county. My home away from home is San Diego. You know, they don't get rid of things, they just solve it. They have a knucklehead clause. They just make it, if you're a knucklehead and cause problems, they make you miserable, instead of taking it away from the masses. You know, it was beautiful. I was just down there, I just had my daughter just pass away, and I was down there, and, you know, on the beach, it says, no alcohol, no glass, no smoking, no disturbing the peace. You know what? They don't close down their beaches, they don't close down their parks, they don't close down their ivories. And as far as the aviary goes, I know that you're taking the birds out, you're not allowing any birds to come in there. I know the Boy Scouts use that, they're very upset. I know my wife's a teacher, my estrada, she takes students there, she's very upset. There's so few points of interest here that, you know, when executives decide, or a guy that owns businesses, why he decides to put a company, a well-paying company in a place, he says, do I want to live there? Do I want to live there? Is there stuff for me to do? Is there stuff for my kids to do? Is there opportunities? Is it fun? When I have my discretionary money, do I go to San Diego, or do I have it here? You know, discretionary money, people say they have no money, they go drop $5,000 to Vegas. Why are we taking away all these points of interest, interest in our heritage? It just kills me. It just kills me. So, I would say, you are, your generation is standing on the Greatest Generation's shoulders, and I hope you constantly point that out, that gave you guys free education, that gave you great schools, great parks, the last time the dollar was the strongest ever being. What legacy are you leaving for the next? To me, it's all about children. I don't care about adults. To me, it's always the next generation. When they wanted to pass a school bond back in 1996, I had no children, I didn't have my first child, I had four, until 2001. I said absolutely, and I'm a conservative, I said absolutely, because it's infrastructure, and it's the next generation, and everything's the next generation. So, I would just say, what legacy are you leaving? What legacy are you leaving for the next generation? And what would they say about your generation? Also, I would let you know that I take this very personal, and anybody knows me, I will spend all my time and all my access to deal with this issue, because I am just so, just, it's just, you know, we used to have Matilah, that was a swimming hole I used to go, I grew up on the Avenue. Instead of dealing with the knuckleheads, they close it down. You know, can't do this, can't do that. It's so anti-human in this county. And then you wonder why people go to Santa Barbara and they go to San Diego. San Diego's the number-one stop in California. So, if you're not going to be drawing businesses that give people good-paying jobs, and you're not going to have tourists, don't be surprised, you got to constantly tell people we got to take. You know, you could pay someone $10 an hour to take away from this county. Why don't we have stuff like they have, they have, it's called the Grants to You. It's a whole organization. My wife's a grant writer, and, and that's all they do, is they train people to, that want to give back to the community, don't want it maybe physical, they're mental, and they write grants. They show them how to write grants. There's so many private governments, and I will be glad to do all the welding to fix your cages. I'll be glad to get many people to come and redo concrete around it. And if you say that, well, there's not a lot of people know about it, well, obviously Linda doesn't know about it. So, obviously, points of interest is not something a lot of people know, and that's our heritage.
Thank you very much for your advocacy. Appreciate your comments.
Take care. God bless.
Our next speaker is Mr. Harry Harton regarding--
Gary Harton. Gee.
Oh, Gary, I apologize. Mr. Gary Harton, and his subject is illegal immigration.
I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people in Simi Valley who are fed up with this crap from illegal aliens and other people in our community, in our state, in our nation, who are screwing up the country. I don't want Ventura County to be distributing literature in Spanish or any other language. Do I have to remind you people that back in the 1980s, we passed a law that says English is the official language of the state of California? When I call up, use the phone, I don't want to be asked if I want information in Spanish. We're fed up with this crap. When you talk to people in this country, you do it in English. When you find people that can't read, write, and speak English, you call up ICE, you have them investigated for being here illegally, and then you initiate deportation proceedings. I have no intention of voting to reelect you, Mr. Foy, because back in February and March, I sent you three letters. Here it is, seven months later, and I still haven't heard from you. Is that how you respond to your constituents? Seven months later, I still haven't heard from you, after I gave you three letters?
I would ask that you address the full Board.
I am, and I'm addressing everybody else in the room here. This stuff about pandering to illegals and people that can't speak English is going to stop. I have friends in Camarillo, and I have friends in Thousand Oaks, and I'm going to encourage every single one of them to have their Board of Supervisor member removed if this crap doesn't stop. This is the United States of America. You come here, you learn how to read, write, and speak English. You don't want to do that? Get out, go live in another country. I hope I've made my point.
Thank you, Gary Harton.
Anybody else wants to talk to me about this? I'll be glad to give you my name, my address, my phone number.
So, we have a choice now, if we want to go to Board Comments or go to our regular agenda. Would you like to, shall we proceed with our Board Comments? And if we need to, we can move the agenda around a little bit for those--
Victoria.
Yes, both for Victoria and I also--
Madam Chair, I see Catherine and Victoria back in the back, so we can do them right after Board Comments.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do it in that order, then. So, at this time, we will go to our Board Comments, and our first will be Supervisor Foy, and we'll work our way over to the right.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I want to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, but also say that I did, with the rest of our supervisors here, enjoy our memorial. It was just, it was a stunning example of people coming out and believing in this great country. Also had the opportunity, as Supervisor Parks was there, too, at the Reagan, which was another tremendous, tremendous, just a tremendous opportunity to, again, show our appreciation and remember the great Americans that had died in a tragic, tragic time in our country's history. So, anyway, also, there's some other things going on. I wanted to congratulate Simi Valley on their 40th anniversary. September is declared Public Safety Month by the city, and it, why it's, besides its 40 years, but it's interesting, if you go back, have everybody ever seen the uniforms that Simi Valley wore back then? They wore green blazers and black slacks. They wanted to appear friendly. I'm not even sure they carry guns. But, anyway, it was, it was interesting. I probably should have brought that picture up. But also, also, something else happening, CHP is offering traffic safety class for teenage drivers and their parents. Their smart start program, reduce collisions, because as you know, the leading cause of death in that age group, 15 to 20, is by death. And it's also being offered in Moore Park and in Ventura, starting this 15th September.
How, what's, what's the age of the youth that could go?
15 to 20 years old, that's the, you know, being killed in an accident is the number-one--
So, you can take them if they're 15 years old?
Yeah, yes. And so, that's part of what they're doing. The CHP is offering these classes. Yeah. So, I thought that was good for all of us to hear that. And then another tragic thing, yesterday marks the third anniversary of the MetroLink train crash in Shattsworth. So, a tragic, tragic time. I can't believe it's been three years already. And then there also might have been, you might have heard some of the discussion and speculation regarding last week's announcement of the metal recyclers agreeing to pay $2.9 million to the people that supposedly were also bringing in some of the waste into the landfill. And I'd like to maybe ask Ready Bakala to just, at some point, keep us informed on what's going on with all that. And I'm sure Ready's all over it, and I've talked to the city manager, and they're looking at Simi Valley the same thing. But what it looks like is, there's, I don't know all the, all the issues, but it doesn't sound like there was really hazardous waste brought in from us, but maybe the person that was bringing stuff in that wasn't legally registered to do that. So, anyway, my comments, and glad to be back. Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, and good morning. And would you queue up that first picture here? These are pictures. Last--
Vacation picture.
Yeah, vacation pictures, yeah. Last Thursday, I had the pleasure, I was still here in the, in the building, and walked down to the artist reception for our Ventura County Arts Council, and I just frankly walked out on the fourth floor and went, wow. Okay, are you queuing that up for me, my pictures? What was that, again? They're working on it. Okay. And when it comes up, you'll go, wow. You know, our Arts Council is so marvelous in work they do countywide, but when they do the art in public places, and particularly what they do here in our county, it's, it's just so appreciated. And this particular piece was called Solar Flare. Okay, next? Next? There, it's, it's coming to life, it's coming to life. Next? And there it is. So, you can imagine, walking on the fourth floor, and I'm going, I went, wow. And this is an artist who's based in Santa Barbara, and he is Poly X-Mono is his name, and he does this type of art every year for the Solstice Festival in Santa Barbara and the Solstice Parade. And inside of that, he actually, in prior settings, has, has people who are doing various acrobatic trapeze-type things inside of this piece of art. And I wanted, I wanted to bring this into the show to Board, because it was late in the evening, and I didn't know any other Board members were present, but it was, GSA worked very closely with Ventura Arts Council, and I wanted to thank them for doing that, because this is the first time this type of visual art has been in this exhibit here in the county. And of course, it is helium and, and, so, anyway, GSA did an excellent job working with them. The artist was so excited. He put this up, brought it in free, you know, didn't charge the Arts Council. He put it up and took it down that same evening. So, there wasn't the benefit of having the many county employees in this building see this wonderful piece. But I wanted to give both the Arts Council appreciation, as always, for their excellent work for our art in public places. For this particular exhibit, when this was just a piece of it, you see the other pieces, and they'll be up for the next month or so. Again, to Poly X-Mono, the artist, to thank him for doing this and bringing this to the Arts Council exhibit. And also to acknowledge that, is there another picture? There's, was that it? I don't recall how many. Oh, that's it. Okay, thank you.
There aren't many places you can put that.
No, there aren't many places you can put that. Most of, like I said, most of his are, are done outside at exhibits. And also to say, for those of you who can or interested in the Arts Council, the Arts Star Awards Dinner Celebration is coming up. It is on next week, September 21st, and it benefits the, obviously, the Arts Council and our, and our young budding artists, and it's, it is a dinner celebration, and if you're interested, I'm sure you can go onto the Ventura County Arts Council website and get information on it. So, an appreciation for what they do to give us all a smile when we walk through this building and see the beautiful pieces. So, wanted to thank them, and thank you for putting that up. And then I'd also like to, I went to a Calafco Conference, day after returning from our brief vacation, and had the pleasure of both the information and the work that's undertaken by the Statewide Association of Lafcos, known as Calafco. But in that, we have our very own awards ceremony to acknowledge leaders throughout the state in the Calafco world and the good work that they do. And I wanted to call out one right here in our very own county, the outstanding Lafco Clerk, Debbie Schubert, our very own Ventura County Lafco Clerk. Debbie does a great job for our Lafcos. She's also worked with the Statewide Association in many different ways in supporting the Clerk's Association component of Calafco, and she does an excellent job for us here at the Lafco level. So, just kudos to her for receiving that statewide award recognition, and also to Lou Cunningham, who's the current Chair of our Lafco. He was, he was elected at this meeting to serve on the Calafco Executive Board as the public member. So, we now have, again, someone from Ventura on the Calafco Board. So, that was good, it was a very good conference, very informative. Have a list of folks to submit, to adjourn in memory of, and particularly one I'll call out in Camarillo, Ivan Estel Maybe. Ivan was a foster, foster parent for years, and also was a worker here for the county of Ventura, an eligibility worker, and others on this list to submit and in memory of. And as was said, the various things throughout the county commemorating the 9/11, the 10-year anniversary, were all very well done. I attended two on Sunday, the one here at the Government Center, and appreciation to our Chair, who I know worked on the committee, and the many others who helped to put that together. It was very well done, and it was very well attended. And I also attended one in Camarillo that had, had a good turnout to it, and you could see that the community was still very touched by having the opportunity to come together in a community setting to commemorate 9/11. So, it was very much appreciated. On Friday, I had the opportunity at the Military Appreciation Dinner that was sponsored by the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce. I had the opportunity to speak, but that, that wasn't the main thing, it was that there were, again, a couple hundred people there, and the, this is the 17th year that the Oxnard Chamber has been putting on this Military Appreciation Dinner, and they recognize Sailor of the Year and men and women in military, current military, for their service to our country. And it's always very warm and just touching to-- And it's always very warm, and just touching to hear the stories of these young, and they all look so, every year, they look younger, but the young men and women who serve, and how they're serving in various, various military uniforms and serving our country. So, kudos to the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce for continuing to put that on yearly. And I think that wraps up. We're back.
Supervisor Zerkoza?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I also like to adjourn in memory of those folks on this list. And I want to continue on what Supervisor Long was mentioning. I also attended that Military Appreciation Dinner, where we honored 10 military personnel from all different military branches. And it was just well-attended, there was a couple hundred people there, and I just want to thank Supervisor Long for making an excellent presentation, and also for representing the county of Ventura. She did an excellent job on that, and I just want to assure that. In addition to that, I also attended the Ventania de Salud. This is a windows of health in downtown Oxnard, where the Mexican Ministry of Services, of Health Services presented a check for $35,000 to supplement the services for these Islas clinics. And Dr. Bob Gonzalez was present to receive that check, and also Dr. Cervantes and his staff, and I want to thank them for, for attending that, that $35,000 gift from the Ministry of Mexico. And then, again, that, even though it's minimal in dollars, it creates a partnership between our two countries, Mexico and the, and the U.S. In addition to, you know, I was really glad to attend the dedication of the new flagpole that I understand is going to be formally done later on. Thank Paul Grossko and his staff, and all the members of the Building Trades for their hard work. And my understanding is that it took a lot more work than that they anticipated, that to dig something like eight feet down into, into the ground, and they poured about eight to nine yards of concrete. So I want to commend them for the good work, and that was done right before the 9/11. And as was mentioned earlier, I just want to thank Laura Hernandez, and the EPC, and all the folks that put that 9/11 remembrance ceremony together here at the Government Center. It was excellent, and, and I just want to thank them all for a good job. And of course, and if I didn't mention anybody else, I want to apologize, because everybody who was involved in that did a good job. Thank you, Laura. That's it.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank, thank you very much. And Roberta, thank you and staff for fixing this during this break there. One, I wanted to thank Supervisor Long for calling out the artwork that was here. I just have to, it made me hark back when I first got here. Some artist approached me about hanging art in the building, and I said, oh, sure, that's a great idea. And I went and checked, and he said, oh, no, no way, there's all kinds of reasons why you couldn't hang art in this building. And I said, really? But over time, it's just been a complete evolution in terms of, of county staff's willingness to cooperate with artists. And this is the public's building, and the public ought to be able to come in here and see fine creative things. So you got to see that, and I'm just glad you shared it, because a lot of people missed it. So it's good of you to have the picture and put it up there. So thank you for that. I do have something important for all five supervisors, and I hope everybody will try to do what they can here. You know, homelessness is an issue that we have really been trying to focus on, and the Society of St. Vincent de Paul, the Ventura Social Service Task Force, and the City of Oxnard Commission on Homelessness, they're holding a black and white dinner fundraiser this October 15th. And so here is a flyer for this, and you're, you're being passed out. They need sponsors for this. This is the, and with the Government Center located right here. This is the, this is the fundraiser that essentially pays for the winter warming shelter that houses the majority of the homeless people in Ventura County, City of Ventura and City of Oxnard primarily. They're, they have the two largest populations. City of Simi Valley is the third-largest population. And they need sponsors, and obviously, people will try to attend the event. It's the second annual, they did it last year, and we traditionally have a problem of having to open the shelter up late, or close it early because of lack of funding. And, and our goal this time is to get it fully funded, so it is there for the whole season. And as, you know, it won't be long, we'll be into the holiday season, we'll have all of those things going on, and certainly, at that point in time, I think we want to be proud enough to say, yes, we've got the winter warming shelter fully funded and out there. So, to the extent that, that we can step up and sponsor and help this fundraiser, I think it reflects well on, on, on all of us here in Ventura County, and for people in the public and people on staff that have heard about this. This fundraiser is going to be at the Oxnard Performing Arts Center, Saturday, October 15th, 6:00 p.m. until midnight. There'll be entertainment, silent auction, and live music by Chico. And the tickets are $50, and all the donations are tax-adductible, and all of the donations will go to that winter warming shelter, that it goes forward. So, thank you for that. The second thing is, as has been mentioned by my three colleagues in front of me, it was an emotional day on Sunday, September 11th. I, I had the pleasure of flying that day on top of everything else, and see the extra airport security, et cetera. I was delighted, I was in Indianapolis for my niece's wedding at 8:30 on Saturday night, on a plane at 6:30 in the morning, and landed at 9:15, and got here just before the 11 o'clock flight. So I just, it just felt like I experienced that whole sort of 9/11 experience, and certainly in the car, listening to the memorial service in New York coming up, and then the great ceremony that was planned here, and to everybody that put that together. I think that was probably the finest ceremony that we've had here at the Government Center. I then went over to the National Search Dog Foundation, and they dedicated plaques to the dogs that they had from September 11th, and they only have one dog left surviving from September 11th. But that was an emotional experience, to watch those handlers talk about those dogs that they worked so closely with, and the dogs that they lost. But what an asset we have here in Ventura County, to have the National Search Dog Foundation. And Wilma Melville and that team, Wilma is one of 20 people on the CNN Heroes List, and they're narrowing it down, but they are trying to raise $14 million, and they have already raised $8 million of $14 million to build this National Search Dog Foundation. They're doing a tremendous job. So anybody that is interested in helping them, it's a great organization. The Kingdom Center, coming full circle back to the homeless, the Kingdom Center decided to continue to have their fundraiser that day, even though it fell on September 11th. They took 10% of their proceeds and gave them to Firefighters for Christ, and the rest of it went to try to, they want to try to raise $50,000, and they can house 20 more people and fully fill up the Kingdom Center in downtown Ventura. And that's 20 more people before Christmas, they're trying to get, get housed there. It was a great fundraiser, I was certainly happy to be there and proud to be part of that great organization. Also want to point out something just completely joyous. Some people in Ojai wanted to have paddle tennis. And they didn't come to the Board of Supervisors and say, build us a paddle tennis court up here in Ojai. They just got together, they raised the money, completely 100% community-funded, and built a paddle tennis center for the public in Ojai. And it's at our Soul Park, it's a wonderful setup. Soul Park is land-rich and resource-poor, and the community stepped forward and funded a dog center there, and now they've, they've got the paddle center there. And I just, it's just another example, it makes me proud to represent the people of Ojai. Also, on August 13th, Oss Williams had a Green Job Summit at Ventura College that I was able to attend. Certainly, one of those areas we really need to focus on, as we focus on jobs. And I saw many of us at the Hank Licaio 80th Birthday Celebration on August 20th. So recap of all of that time while we were gone, and welcome back, everybody, and kind of like, strap on, and here we go, right, after the break.
Buckle the seatbelt, huh? Well, thank you for that. You know, hearing about the rescue, the dogs that go out and help rescue people, I hadn't even thought about it, but apparently, at the 9/11, with the rescue dogs were actually having problems burning their paws and their nose. I'm just thinking, we need some kind of technology there to help the dogs.
Madam Chair. Can I add a little bit to what Supervisor mentioned about the St. Vincent de Paul fundraiser? I attended that last year, and it was well-attended, and I, I think it's great, you know, what the City of Oxford is doing, and also the Society of St. Vincent de Paul. And I really liked their model, it says, give a little warmth to the ones that are left in the cold. And I think it's extremely important that, that we participate and, and give a little, you know, for those folks that need some help. I did attend it last year, and it was well-attended, and I hope that, that many people attend this year too. So I want to thank you for bringing that up.
And you realize, go ahead, go ahead.
I wanted to mention something, you mentioned about the dogs. You know, these, these search dogs are almost all rescue dogs, and they're rescue dogs because they're so hyperactive, they're so over the top, that that's the kind of dog you need, is a dog that, that won't give up when their paws get burned. They're so determined, that what happens is, they're so hyperactive, their owners give them up, because they can't handle them. And so this is like, you know, it's like taking the special ed children and finding something that's really important for them to do, that's what you're doing with those dogs also. And, but you talk about determination, those dogs, they get after it, and at their, at risk to them, which is why many of them die early, you know, as a result of that.
And then what, you know, for the entire nation, what a great facility there in Ojai, that can be called upon. And, yeah, also with the black and white dinner, with the Kingdom Fellowship Center, I think it's so important, people in the East County I've mentioned, you know, about the collaboration with the churches, and to actually house homeless people, to take a facility and fix it up, and adopt families, and that is, that is so exceptional, and unfortunately, so needed with the resources that government has right now. We don't have, we can't do it all, and having that collaboration with the churches is instrumental.
I think that also turned that whole area around by doing that, fixing that whole thing, I see. It was a great way to bring it all together.
Just a couple of things, again, I agree with you, I think that was the nicest ceremony I've attended here at the Government Center on 9/11. It was just so appropriate, very beautiful, and very, very touching. So, again, kudos to Bill Nash and Laura Hernandez, and the, the whole committee that put that together. Also, was able to attend, when Supervisor Foy was talking about helping with the new drivers on the 118, I did attend the last task force meeting of the Arrive Alive on 118 Committee. The CHP had been getting grants and really focusing in on getting DUIs off the road, and how many accidents are caused by people, not only drugs, but, not only alcohol, but also drugs. But I thought it was telling that part of the grant funds was, they're stopping people, but also talking to them, and having that eye-to-eye contact is so effective compared to just getting literature. So, they have seen the reduction in accidents as a result of that, I believe. So, it's good to have that, and hopefully, we will get some more grant funds to continue that program. Yesterday, I attended the American Planning Association Conference. I was able to get in one day, and it was, it was great to be able to see what's happening in land use planning, also in, in legal issues associated with our, our land use. And I know that we have a lot of new regulations coming before us, new ways of coordinating our planning with transportation. And one thing that really stood out to me, I went to one in the implementation of SB375, which requires that we do put together our housing and our transportation plans together. What a novel concept to, to put them together when you do planning. But to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to reduce the number of vehicle miles traveled. And one, one city or one organization, Gateway Cities, has actually put together their first required sustainable community strategy, which is, what are they going to do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by vehicle trips? And the most effective, and they used target to determine how much they would reduce, and I had to ask, what was it that reduced the most greenhouse gas emissions? And the answer was adding lanes. And I just thought, oh my, that isn't, doesn't seem to be where we've been directing our attention. And I would imagine, as we know, in transportation planning, when you do add lanes to a freeway, they fill up, and it's just a matter of time, and then you're at gridlock again. So it, it is kind of short-term thinking, I think. And I know that in Ventura County, we're looking a little bit further out than just adding lanes, but actually, ways that we can encourage people to use other modes of transportation, and then also being able to work from home, and, and other ways to reduce car trips. I also was able to attend an American Association of University Women's Breakfast, where I know if some of you know, Therese Hughes put on a presentation. She's done a study of veteran women, women who have served in World War II particularly, as well as currently veteran women in the military. And I, it was so inspiring, and to, you often hear from the, the old men veterans, but to hear from the old women was wonderful, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring one to our Board for the moment of inspiration, because it really was inspiring, and tough, tough ladies. Also attended the, Cal Lutheran University has a series of corporate leaders' breakfasts, and that, even though I'm not a corporate leader, it's great to hear from their wonderful line of speakers that they have, and they'll be having their next one here in the West County, so we'll have to be sure and attend that. I also, as Supervisor Long pointed out, about our new leadership roles in the Cal Lafco Local Agency Formation Commission. We also saw in our local Ventura Lafco, the retirement, quick retirement, I might say, of Ken Hess. Ken Hess has been a member of Lafco for quite some time, member of the Ventura County Fair Board, former city council member from Port Juanimi, and just a real gentleman, real cordial and easy to work with, and a man with good intelligence, and, and very fair-minded. So, he will be very much missed too. So, in conclusion, we'll go ahead and say, what are the interesting facts that occurred on this day in history? Well, we know, obviously, that today is Uncle Sam Day, a day to celebrate one of America's most widely recognized symbol, Uncle Sam. And I don't think it's his birthday, but it is Uncle Sam Day nonetheless. And on this day in 1814, Francis Scott Key wrote the poem "The Defense of Fort McHenry", which was later set to music in 1931, and became America's National Anthem, the Star-Spangled Banner. And also, finally, in 1948, Margaret Chase Smith of Maine was elected to the United States Senate and became the first woman to serve in both Houses of the U.S. Congress. Hooray for Margaret Chase Smith. And with that, concludes my Board comments, and we'll go to the item that we've decided to pull out to the front, which is item number 42. And this is with Supervisor Bennett and Long. If you'd like to go ahead and take that one.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Really pleased to have both of, both of you here, Victoria and Catherine, here today to, to talk about this. You know, the Stark Hole has been a tough issue, because you have people that retired before 1981, it's a limited pool, these are people, these are not people that are, are getting the kind of pensions that the public is reading in the newspaper that are concerning them. For many of these people, it's hundreds of dollars that they're, that they're receiving in terms of their pension. And unfortunately, the Stark Hole that was provided to them was not, the Retirement Board was not able to fully fund it at the time that they retired it, and simply took the funding out of excess earnings, which no longer exist. Since that has ended, I've spent a lot of time trying to research this and look at this, and there really this and there really is not, Supervisor Foy was on the Retirement Board when they had to vote on this, but there's, there's not a funding option out there in, in terms of this with, with Vasara. And so I was having a conversation with Catherine Raely, who, for those of you that don't know, does an amazing job along with Victoria, helping seniors in our county. And she said to me, I'd sure like to get the list of those seniors because I'll bet that there are a bunch of them that we could do some things for. And I have been on this search in terms of what is the right thing for us to do to help some of these people who have had a change in income very late in life and, and potentially, you know, putting them at, at risk. Not all of these retirees are in the same situation. Some of them are, you know, double-income families, have another spouse there, but some of them where this is their only income and it has been cut and, and they may not have enough for their basic needs. I would like to identify them as our first step, find out who they are, what their situation is, see what kind of services are available. And I would also like to hear back from, from Catherine and Victoria, if there is anything else that is in particular that they may have as a need. So there are legal issues in terms of getting everybody's names. There are practical issues in terms of identifying these people. But it strikes me that it is the humane thing for us to do is to make the effort to try to identify the neediest and not everybody is, is going to qualify. But those people, particularly people who, that this is their only source of income and find out what their situation is. They are our county employees that have retired and, and, and some of them, you know, over time probably lost track of the fact that part of their income was a temporary supplement that could, that could go away. And, you know, you could imagine that somebody, you know, I just was visiting my mother, ninety years old, you know, I could imagine her in a few years not being sure which part of her income was permanent and which part of her income was temporary in terms of, of her planning. Again, these are retirees that, that retired before eighty-one. It is a limited pool. There's no growth in this pool. In fact, it's a, it's a pool that over the years continues to decline in, in numbers. So I know Supervisor Long has some comments to make and then I'd love to hear from you two about what ideas you have and really implore the CEO's office to use the services of County Council and Vasara to find out what can we do to kind of ferret these out. And the last thing I'd leave you with is, it seems like part of that is at least to, to the extent that people know of these people and can contact those people and say, hey, you know, they're, they're trying to create this list. Do you want to get your name on that list so that people, because if people voluntarily provide their name, obviously that's the best for us. But if there's anything else we can do to try to help identify Supervisor Long.
Right. And I think that last part is the first step to see, to ask those people to step forward, to ask them to talk to, to you all because it's a neutral party, a safe ground for them and, and to protect their privacy. There's no question that their benefits have not kept up with the inflation and the cost of living. And to look at these, what are the super elderly, to think that they, they, as was said, they may not have even realized that we're going to lose these dollars and they're a few precious dollars in some cases. And to be able to identify them and see where we can through existing services that we have here in the county to help them out, to call out to the community to help them if that's what's needed, to, for us to be able to at least know what the need is and then identify how we might be able to fill it. And you do such an excellent job with our seniors already to be able now to, to again, help us to reach out to them and get them to tell us what their needs are. I think we have, I think we have a responsibility to, to help them, not just leave them out there alone. So to hear from you.
Well, we're, we're looking at, you know, two ways. One is the agency through all of our partnerships with community organizations, there's a tremendous amount of services that these people, once they're identified, could be eligible for. We maintain a master database of senior services so we know through a quick look of the database, who is getting what and who needs to be referred for programs that they're eligible for. The other way we were thinking with, is with the Hi-CAP program and Kathy, you can.
Well, with that, we know that county insurance could probably be something they still have and they've held on to, maybe not. We could probably move a lot, I won't say, I don't know how many, but from what I read in the Star, we could put some of them on straight Medicare with Medi-Cal because that is where they belong and they'd have a hundred percent and they would be saving that three or four hundred, whatever it is they're paying out a month for county insurance. Some of them may not want that or may not belong there, but there's going over to Medicare and a Medicare plan could be very much cheaper for them than staying with the county plan. So we would be looking at those types of things also. We definitely would be looking at their income because at their income, we know and we're trained to know where they could go. Could they get CalFresh? Could they get help from the public utilities? Also, we know some are in board and cares maybe or nursing homes. And I don't know what those are going to need. They may need some, they may not, but that's another issue. They may not even be in their own home.
Madam Chair, if I, if, if I could, number one, I, I think, I think this, this helps point out the great value of us continuing to support AAA and, and how much, how much we, how much we get leverage for very little in terms of county dollars, in terms of services. So as, as this goes forward, I just would like to say if, if, if we run into either there are certain, certain resources needed to, to better identify these people or if there's a particular resource needed to help these people, for me, that's not off the table. I'd like to hear about that. But right now, I'd like to do the first step, which is that identification. And I, and I, and I think it is important that we be clear to people. We're trying to identify those people that are at the most need, basic needs for people, not people who, again, there's some people in this category that, that won't be in that same, almost desperate spot as we go forward.
I'd just add that we will certainly support AAA and working with Vasara as well as other county departments, the HSA and as well as Health Care Agency to find these resources. So.
Supervisor Foy.
Ida, I know when we were going through that whole thing, there's a lot of these people have moved out of the county and out of state. Is there also the opportunity just to talk about these services that maybe provide in other areas? For some of those people, they may not know where to go.
The good thing about our funding is, is that it's available. Our programs are available nationwide.
Great.
So in every straight, in every state, in most counties, there's a AAA and the same thing with the Hi-CAP program. Maybe, maybe call something different.
So we can find, if there's possibility, find a lead then to these kind of opportunities to help them out.
We, we could go through those, through our other shifts nationwide.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor.
I understand too that, that some of those folks are in their eighties, late eighties and the only monies they have is minimal dollars that they have, social security and so forth. And by taking those additional dollars away would really hurt them tremendously. So I, I think that we need, we need to take that first step and then go from there like the Supervisor mentioned and, and help them out.
And maybe those, the ones that have had those dollars taken away, they may qualify for SSI supplemental. That's what we would be looking at. And Hi-CAP will do the applications to the various facilities that they need and, and we would go back and make sure that they receive what they need too. We would not want to step on, say, Medi-Cal's toes or anything, but we would definitely do the applications and, and everything like that to get it to the place and everything so that they could get what they need.
And this is a limited amount of people. There's not the rest of the folks that are retiring.
Right.
I want to thank you for helping me work through this as we had this conversation and I was asking you about this, this group. So thank you very much.
He, he asked me if there was anything I would like to talk about when he was over there. He should have asked me that.
All right. I move the recommended action.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second from Supervisor Long. If you could all please vote.
Thank you for your willingness to work on this. Thank you.
And that passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda then will be our, the item thirty-nine with our Health Care Agency.
Oh. Okay, our first item, yeah, we're doing it at ten o'clock.
And do we have someone from the Health Care Agency here to make the presentation for item thirty-nine? Okay. Sorry about that. Good morning.
Chair Parks, Board of Supervisors, CEO Powers, members of the board and the public and the county. I am here before you today to present contracts and amendments that are necessary and will allow us to continue our participation in a program that I'm sure you're all well aware of, and that's the ACE Program. It's now being referred to by the acronym LIHP. LIHP stands for Low Income Health Program. And beginning July one of this year, continuing through December thirty-first of twenty thirteen, what you have before you are contracts and amendments that will allow us in the County of Ventura and the Health Care Agency to continue to claim from the state and CMS for this program. In summary, we have the ACE Program currently and it operates under what's called an eleven-fifteen waiver. And that is a program that allows the State of California to fund Medi-Cal in the state. The new program called the Bridge to Reform became effective November first and is actually now made up of two programs. The first called the MCE, which is Medicaid Coverage Expansion Program. That covers individuals who are at zero to one hundred and thirty-three percent of the federal poverty level. The second program is the Health Care Coverage Initiative and that covers adults with incomes over one hundred and thirty-three but to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Those two groups were previously covered under our ACE Program historically, but now there is a separation between those two pieces. And that's because when health care reform kicks in in twenty fourteen, that MCE population will transition over to Medi-Cal. The other population, the thought is, will go into health care exchange where their ability to purchase health care coverage will be subsidized. So for individuals who don't traditionally qualify for Medi-Cal, this program provides coverage for those individuals. The contract's in front of you with the state and there's an amendment that allows us to claim for a period for which the current contract ended before the new contract begins. That's the amendment piece. The second piece is the contract. It becomes effective July one. It allows us to claim federal monies that will fund fifty percent of our cost for providing care and services to the population. There is another contract before you with Clinifest del Camino Real. They've been in our partner in this since the beginning. They provide clinic services to ACE enrollees and they also are the sole provider of dental benefits for these, this population. We do offer a dental benefit to our ACE enrollees. There is a new contract and that contract is with the California Department of Corrections. And that is because on October nineteenth of twenty ten, there was an assembly bill passed and it was signed by the governor and it removed a previous restriction that barred the state of being able to claim for prison inmates. The state is now allowed to claim for those inmates for inpatient hospital care only. So the state is in a process of enrolling eligible beneficiaries who qualify for Medi-Cal, either under Medi-Cal or once this contract goes through dated October first, for enrollees who will qualify for our LIHP program, only the MCE portion, the zero to one hundred and thirty-three percent, they'll be able to claim those. That piece is of no cost to the county. We will act as a pass-through. We will certify those public expenditures or costs that the prisons get or have as a result of inpatient care to inmates.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
I mean, here you have medical care coming from the government to the prisoners, but when they get released, they get denied their coverage because they, they were incarcerated. You may not know the answer to that, but to me that, you know, you, particularly with people, for example, with mental illness, you know, they get their medication in prison and they get released and they can't pay for their, their drugs anymore and they end up back in prison.
Right. My understanding is currently what happens is if somebody qualifies for Medi-Cal and is incarcerated, what's supposed to happen is that Medi-Cal's supposed to suspend during the period that they're incarcerated. However, there is supposed to be an ability for it to be reactivated, so to speak, at the point at which they get discharged. Now, the issue is, any of these programs are voluntary and you can't force individuals to either complete the application process or sign up or continue the enrollment. So many times that tends to be more of an issue than anything else.
And maybe something we can do is assist them so they don't have a large gap in time when they can't get their medications.
Yes.
And if it's a matter of filling out applications or what, you know, that, that's something I think needs help.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Powers, did you have a comment on that?
I would just add to that and check with Ms. Stanley here that with this program, the Health Care Agency is also working with the Sheriff's Department to help lower the medical costs in the jail for inmates. And so this would be a big, big plus for that.
Correct.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to try to put this in the context of overall health care being provided here in Ventura County. This is a remarkable program that has come in and only a few counties have been selected. I believe three in all of California and it is because of, of the great job that our health care system has done and the reputation that our health care system has at the state level in terms of having this. So if you're a resident of Ventura County, you live in probably the best place in California for health care if you're looking to the county's health care system overall. And, you know, it's just really easy for us to take that for granted. And what I just want, I think what today points out is, I can remember, and I know Supervisor Long, it was right before I got here, can remember the day when there were all kinds of issues with non-compliance and you were out of compliance and this paperwork wasn't done properly. And all of that stuff kills the funding for your system because all of a sudden you, you don't get the funding, you don't get this. And what I think's been remarkable over the ten years is that we consistently get the paperwork right. We consistently get the applications right. We, and that is just so easy for us as, you know, supervisors sit up here and take for granted. And this is getting the paperwork right so that our citizens get something. And then because we're so consistent at getting that and we then provide good service, it snowballs up. And your medical system in a county like this is either on a spiral up or a spiral down. And this is on a spiral up because of each step. When it's good patient care, it's there. When it's good facility planning, it's there. But I want to compliment, but when it's the people behind the scenes getting all of the legal paperwork right, it's there also. This is a remarkable program. I think if you had to pick something to be proud of in Ventura County, this should certainly be easy to put on the top of your list. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that too, Supervisor Bennett. And then not only that, but it's also more cost efficient, you know, in the long run and ends up with a healthier population too.
Can I share some numbers that you all need to be very proud of? It has to do with, we're finishing our fourth year of this program and that's all because of your support, your continued support for what we do. We have to date enrolled, unduplicated people in the program to the tune of nineteen thousand one hundred and nine. So those are individuals who reside in our county who would not have had that opportunity. So those are individuals who reside in our county who would not have had that opportunity previously. Our clinic system has provided 113,341 clinic visits to that population. We've done 2,415 outpatient procedures. We've done 2,315 hospital admissions. We've done 7,701 emergency department visits. Would have been higher without the clinics. We've provided 12,267 dental visits through that partnership that we have with Clinicas del Camino Real. And we filled a total of 162,178 prescriptions. That's much-needed medications that people have said, time and time again, they would not have been able to get without this program. So there's lots of stories. I can tell you some patient stories and physician stories. There was an individual who worked for a major corporation, victim of a corporate downsizing, was diagnosed in cancer during the middle of all of this. That individual came in to apply for ACE. We got that individual on, and that individual was able to continue the treatment and is doing well today without any gaps in service or care. There was another retired gentleman who could no longer get around. He couldn't afford his annual premiums. He was too young for Medicare, but he had retired. He was unable to walk, he had some serious knee osteoarthritis. We got him in the system, we got him the surgery he needs, and he said, "I've been given my life back. This is a godsend." We provided case managers and dieticians in the clinics. They work with our patients day in and day out, and with our clinicians. And one of our clinic directors said, "I don't know how I dealt with some of the most complex individuals before this." So.
Well, this is a hard one, but I'm going to move that.
We have a motion from Supervisor Bennett, a second from Supervisor Long. If we could all please vote. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. We know it's not easy, because, again, counties are required that they have to provide to their indigent and the poor, but so many do it so poorly, and we do it so well. So congratulations. Thank you for all the good work.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. With that, we're going to go to our 10:00 AM time certains. We have five of them, and we've been requested to move up the last one, which is regarding McGrath State Beach. And I know that we have Assemblymember Dos Williams here, and I think he also has to get back to the American Planning Association Conference. If you haven't been there yet, I know you were going to be a key speaker there. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Supervisors Aragosa and Bennett on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's really, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to share with you all the work that we've done, the enormous success that we've had in saving McGrath State Beach Park. In fact, you know, as you know, just to give a little history, and you recall, on August 9, we directed our GSA Parks and Parks Division to develop a strategy to keep McGrath Park open. And we met with Paul Grosskol and his people, and we were trying to set up meetings to probably fly to Sacramento to talk to the Parks people there, but we were very fortunate to have Rich Roselli, Roselle, excuse me, meet with us, and Supervisor Bennett's staff and my staff. So we formulated a plan that we presented to Richard, but he came out with a different plan. And the plan was for the state to keep the park. But before I continue, I just want to thank Paul Grosskol and his staff for all the good work that they try to do to try to help us. So Supervisor Bennett and I met with Richard Roselle and his staff, and we were making a recommendation to the board today that we direct our CEO and Audit and Controller to make a payment in the amount of $50,000 to the State Parks Department to save McGrath State Beach Park Fund. And this is with the contingency, and this is important, the contingency that the state provide the funding of at least $250,000 to the same fund. The state of California approved a list of parks that are going to be closed, and McGrath Park was one of them. McGrath Park brings many camping and day visitors, and the fees that are provided are sufficient for the park's operations. However, the state does not have sufficient funds to repair and upgrade the deteriorating sewer line and other related sewer facilities. So it is estimated that about a half a million dollars are needed for the sewer facility repairs and upgrades. If this funds can be obtained, then the park will remain open for the next 60 days. But Richard has already taken the optimistic view, and is going to keep it open for the next 60 days. The state of California Parks has applied for a grant which would provide $250,000 in funding for the repairs. In addition to that, he's going to provide another $100,000 from his operating budget for the Central Coast area. The remaining $150,000, hopefully, can come from donations or local resources. We believe that McGrath Park is a great asset to the Ventura County community. Richard has done really something important, I think, that is, we wondered if, who was using the park? And through the demographics and zip codes, we found out that the majority of people are from Ventura County. From Camarillo, from Thousand Oaks, Moore Park, Simi Valley, Oxnard, and Ventura, they all use the park. Visitors come to Oxnard and Ventura in the summertime to escape the temperatures of the hot eastern county weather, and also to enjoy the cool weather and ocean breezes here in Oxnard and Ventura. McGrath State Park provides a great economic benefit to our community, with campers and day visitors purchasing food, drinks, firewood, camping supplies, and other items at local grocery stores, and also they visit our restaurants. In fact, I have some emails of some individuals that have spent up to $1,200 in a weekend, up to $1,000 and so forth in the weekend, coming over to enjoy our beautiful weather here in Oxnard and Ventura. McGrath State Park is probably one of the best birdwatching areas in California, with the lush river banks of the Santa Clara River and the sand dunes along the shores. A nature trail leads to the Santa Clara Estuary, a natural reserve for three to four endangered species call home. The park has also about two miles, a beach mile, providing surfing and fishing opportunities for residents. With all this benefits, we believe that Ventura County residents, it's a belief, I believe, and I'm sure that Bennett believes too, that it's imperative that we keep this park open. It's a special park, has been in the system for about 50 years, and it provides an opportunity for over half a million people to visit this park. I just want to also share that on August 26, we had a press conference at the park. This was filled with many public and private individuals and supporters. I want to thank Assemblymember Dos Williams for his assistance, for his support regarding this issue. We had Senator Fran Pavly there with us at the time. We had City of Oxnard Council members, and Mayor Protamireen Pinkert, Carmen Ramirez, and also want to give a special thanks to Brian McDonald for his support. He's been very diligent in supporting us in this effort, and in fact, he's bringing this item before the Oxnard City Council tonight. I also want to thank other individuals. Hannah Van Jackson was there, John Hatcher, NAACP III was there, along with Cindy Crawford from Long Beach, and this is not Cindy Crawford, the model, but Cindy Crawford. The one individual that was on Facebook, she had thousands and thousands of people voting for, to keep McGrath Park open, because Coca-Cola had a contest. We're looking at first price of $100,000, second price of $50,000, and third price of $25,000. And my understanding, when we first started this voting, we were about 10th or 11th, and we ended up at 5th place. I don't think they finished counting yet, but I hope we come out at least 3rd, you know, on this contest. And again, as I mentioned before, we have many people contribute to the economy, $1,200. Thousands of dollars have come to the Oxnard and Ventura area. Also, I want to thank Victoria Borgeson from Oxnard High School, the band booster. She's taking photos, networking, fundraising. If you look at her website, Facebook, boy, she, every single day, you know, she's saying something good about McGrath, you know, and I want to thank you for that, because you've done an excellent job. And there's many, many other people that have helped us, you know, it's too numerous, and I want to apologize if I don't mention your name. But I believe that keeping McGrath Park open provides a great benefit to our residents, our local businesses, and we recommend that the county provide $50,000 to the state fund to save McGrath Park. And again, this is a great partnership between the state, between the county, between the cities, and also our residents. And this is one of my ideas of a great partnership, and I really ask the board to support us. Supervisor Bennett?
Great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Parks, and board members, and to the public out there. First, I'd just like to recognize the special leadership of Supervisor Aragosa on this issue. He recently inherited this area in redistricting, and really stepped up, right before he inherited, but knowing it was going to happen. We met with Richard and the state park officials about this, and I appreciate their cooperation. But it has been a real pleasure to watch you and your office really step up and kick it in gear on this. I also like to recognize the kind of leadership that I just keep seeing over and over again really impressing me, and that's from Assemblymember Dos Williams. But when he ties into something, he ties into something. And congratulations on getting your library bill just passed to the State Senate, and I know you worked actively on that, and I'm happy that we could help in a small way. But then you're sitting there, you're here today, trying to make sure that this one goes forward. And so you're a great ally for the County of Ventura up at the State Assembly, and we appreciate that. And Brian McDonald out at City of Oxnard, we need the City of Oxnard's help with this, and your willingness to take the lead and bring this one forward is very helpful. So that, and then state agencies stepping forward, and staff of state agencies. And then when you put that together with the significant public support for this project, I think that there are times when you say, hey, this is one of those times when you do it. These are tough budget times, and I think we have to ask ourselves, we need to be very careful about stepping forward and saying, "We're going to fund," because, believe me, in the next few months, as the state budget stuff comes forward, we're going to have almost everything under the sun come to us and say, "What are you going to save, and what aren't you going to save? What are you going to get involved in?" And I think we have to, we're going to have to be very prudent as we make those decisions. But the partnerships, the community support for this, I think justify this. And then also, I think what helps me justify it is, this new out-of-county trash fee that we just have implemented on the Simi Valley, we dedicated, we said to parks and open space, was, we want a significant portion of that funding to go there. And so I would like to ask, as part of our motion, that whatever fund the CEO's office thinks is appropriate for this, initial $50,000 to come from, whatever reserve fund, because it's a one-time expenditure, that it be replenished by the first $50,000 that we raise in the out-of-county fees, the fees on the LA County trash coming into Simi Valley. So it'd be earmarked that those funds go back to try to replenish this at that point in time, so that we truly are beginning to follow through on our commitment to use those funds for things like recreation and open space, and not have a current fund depleted permanently for this. So with that, thank you again, I really appreciate it. That's my sense in terms of funding.
Let me share one more thing here before we, I wanted to ask our CEO about the funding part of it, but I just wanted to share just a little bit more. I've got many, many emails and calls, and this one individual, Cherry Smith says, you know, Supervisor Aragosa, thank you so much for keeping McGrath open. I just visited McGrath Park, and I spent $1,200 in the last four days here in Oxnard and Ventura. We have another one who says, this is from Jennifer Holden, I don't think it's Holden's, Mayor Holden's, he says, Supervisor Aragosa and Supervisor Bennett, I've just spent hundreds of dollars in the local grocery stores, restaurants, gas stations, Bonds, Starbucks, Over at Oxnard, and all over, to Harbor Village and Ventura. What a beautiful place McGrath Park is. Keep it open. And this is the type of stuff that we're getting day in and day out. And I just wanted to ask our CEO about the funding before we continue.
Yes, pending your board's approval, we could certainly make the payment from the GSA Parks Department, and then pledge to backfill that from future revenues from the Simi Landville. Yes. With the understanding that it's contingent upon payment from the state of the $250,000.
Of getting the funding of $250,000.
Of getting the funding from the state, right.
If I can be a little bit more specific on the accounting, it would be fund $2,600, Parks, budget unit 7130, account 3801, contribution to outside agencies. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to go to public comment. I know Assemblymember Williams has another appointment he's got to get to, too. So let's start with Mr. Williams, followed by Richard Roselle.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members. I just want to tell you, first of all, I really appreciate the warm welcome at your 9/11 commemoration on Sunday. It was wonderful to attend, to sit with all of you at that very solemn but important occasion for our community. My name's Dos Williams. I represent Ventura and Oxnard in the State Assembly, and soon will be representing Santa Paula, Fillmore, Piru, and Ohi. So I, my role and my hope is, my participation and cooperation with the county will just continue to increase. I wanted to preface my arguments by telling you that when I ran for the State Assembly, I was hoping to give more money to the County of Ventura, not always come here to ask for it. But I think this is a real case where we need to work together. Because 500,000, over 500,000 visitors visit McGrath every year, and most of those are local residents, especially in times when not everyone has a whole lot of money for vacations. It's great to have a wonderful place right in our own backyard that can be visited. And those that don't come from the County of Ventura spend money here helping our economy. And the park takes in enough that it is not an ongoing issue that is at hand, but the capital expenditures necessary to upkeep the park that will not have to be necessarily an ongoing expense for the county or the state. I just want to thank everyone who's worked on this, but particularly Supervisor Bennett, Councilmember Brian McDonald, and especially our ringleader, Supervisor Aragosa, for their leadership on this. It is wonderful to see, and a few weeks ago, these elected officials, along with others, came together to make a plea to the community to help save McGrath. And the outpouring of support was so significant that it was determined that the park would have a reprieve for two months. And it's my hope that we don't squander that time, that we make that two months count, and come up with the money to match the Planning and Conservation Grant so that we can save the park. It's my commitment to continue to work with you and to continue to work with state parks to make sure that that commitment is real on the part of the state, and to be asking, of course, the City of Oxnard to also help out. They will have a council meeting tonight, and your approval today will send exactly the right message to the council in Oxnard and to the state, that this is a cooperative effort, and together that we will save McGrath State Park. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time. It's great to be back after an exhausting session that ended at 2:00 AM on Saturday morning. And any service that I can be in my office, now that we're between legislative sessions, I want to be here for you, the County of Ventura. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember.
Madam Chair, I'd also want to thank James Joyce, who's been very instrumental in helping Dos Williams, you know. Thank you, Assemblymember.
And with our California State Parks, Mr. And with our California State Parks, Mr. Rozell, followed by Brian McDonald.
Good morning, Chair Parks, Supervisors. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Richard Rozell. I'm the district superintendent for the Channel Coast District of California State Parks. I'm responsible for the management and oversight of 12 state parks in Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties, including McGrath State Beach. As Assemblymember Williams and Supervisor Zaragosa have already mentioned, this has just been a very motivating experience for me as a park professional, to see the community come together and stand up for what's right and what is needed to sustain a community. And that's a park system that's healthy and vibrant. As mentioned earlier, there's a $500,000 repair that needs to be made. That repair would allow us to keep the park open and providing recreational opportunities to the park. California State Parks obviously recognizes McGrath State Beach has many issues, many problems. The campground was built in a floodplain, the facilities are aging. We continue to want to maintain the recreation, but actually looking to the future, I think this partnership that we're developing today will help us spearhead an effort to completely restore the campground, have wetlands restoration in the area that are significant enough. I think granting agencies out there that are interested in wetland rehabilitation will come forth with money. I've applied for grants to begin the planning effort for that. I'm committed towards restoring that park completely and seeing that the public has even a better facility in the future. But the first step is today. With your support and the support of the city of Oxnard and others, we can get the sewer line repaired and move forward. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
We do have one. Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rozell, for coming in to speak to this and inspired by what's taken place here and the support that's being generated. The long-term, obviously, the infrastructure is a significant piece here. So fixing that and the long-term shelf life of that, McGrath for 50 years has withstood floods and all the different weather conditions that occur at that beach. So you, I'm going to ask you, you're convinced that if we're able to fix this one piece of infrastructure, it will help us for, again, another 50 years for this location, which is a difficult, challenging one, but one that is much beloved, as you hear, but ask you that.
Well, this fix right now will buy us some time for planning, for a future complete redo of the park. That may include using this component of the sewer system. It may actually mean using another component or newer component. But what I'm saying is that, yes, this is a short-term fix. The long-term is basically starting from scratch, getting the campground out of the wetland, restoring wetlands, putting the campground in a location where it won't be subject to flooding, improve the facilities, and provide a park that we can all be proud of.
Okay, so that still is the long-term goal for this location?
Very much so. It's stated in the general plan for the park. I made a commitment to my staff, to my superiors, as well as the partnering agencies, Department of Fish and Game, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who are very excited about doing wetlands restoration, and to the point where I think their funds that come out of their grant programs would also go towards providing recreational facilities, restrooms, new campsites, sewer infrastructure, things like that.
Is there a, and I'm not trying to pin you down, but when you look at a window, short-term, long-term, short-term being 15, 20 years?
Well, our grant application, the decision will be made in December for to do the planning activity that's necessary to move to the next step of getting permits and applying for funding for implementation. If we're not successful in that grant program, there's others we're going to be applying for. But if we started today with a planning effort and had the funding to support that, it'll generally be a three- to five-year process where you have public meetings, stakeholder input. Obviously, you have to analyze the natural and cultural resources that are out there and make a good design with good decisions so that we're not dealing with a campground that's flooded.
Madam Chair, and Richard, I understand that you have a draft general plan already of the short-term, long-term plans for McGrath Park.
Correct. The general plan for the park allows us to move campsites further down coast, out of the wetlands area. So we wouldn't have to do an update to the general plan to make an expansion or actually to get out of the floodplain and to redo the park.
Okay, so the repair of the infrastructure that all of this energy is around will continue to be an important piece of that even with, if there is a relocation?
Very much so. Right now, it makes sense to take the sewage across Harbor Boulevard Bridge and put it into the City of Ventura's Reclamation Plant. I don't see any evidence that would require us to go a different direction if we do future planning, but there is a chance there may be a more economically feasible solution to the sewage in the park, which may send the sewage down towards the City of Oxnard or to the Fifth Street connection.
I appreciate your taking this commitment to try to make this work. This is a great asset for our county. Right now, the park pays for itself just on the general? Is that what it threw, the regular fees and things?
Yes. A lot of people talk about revenues staying locally to support the park to operate it. The way the state park budgeting process goes is we collect the revenues locally, they're sent up to Sacramento, and then redistributed back. But McGrath State Beach is definitely a break-even, if not in the black operation, given the interest of camping there and the significant revenues that come in by people paying camping fees.
So I guess my concern, kind of like Supervisor Long's, is the idea that you're going to go for your grant, do that. The city of Oxnard may put some money up, we may put some money up, but the people out there are going to try to contribute and do that, which I think is great. I mean, I love the idea that people say, I want something. We saw that earlier in Ojai, where Supervisor Bennett said something about one of our parks, people came, put something in. But the idea is that we're going to be able to say, one year, two years from now, we're not going to shut it down after. That's the big issue. And I know that we've got all the economic issues that you have to deal with through parks, but I guess that's my concern. After all, the people do something, are we going, is there a chance we could disappoint the citizens out there that something could happen after this half million dollars is spent?
I really don't think so. There is a reference to the state park closure list. This park would not be on the closure list if you just looked at the criteria of revenue versus operating cost.
So that is the, that's why I ask that upfront. So at least they'd say, even though the money goes up to Sacramento, they can at least say this park pays for itself?
Sure. We do recognize the benefit of generate revenue. In fact, a portion of our authority to spend is based on the amount of revenue we generate in state parks.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right. So you, from your, I know like Supervisor Long's, you can't give us any guarantees, but as the citizens of this county get together and try to support the park they love, you're saying that we don't see this as a thing that's going to be on a list that is going to shut down no matter what we, no guarantee, but what's going to go on economically statewide? I know that's a hard.
We would be doubtful as to close a park that generates the revenue it does. We would be basically taking money out of our budget to do that, because I mentioned we have the authority to spend our revenues. If our revenues decrease, we have less spending authority. So it would not be a good business decision for the state park system to close a park that generates the revenue that McGrath does.
Okay.
Sounds like a guarantee to me.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it sounds like he's making a real good business decision on that situation. I just, I mean, you're going to get a lot of people coming together, and you've got this whole coordination happening. You'd hate to see the disappointment, because it's, you know, it's tenuous on parks issue. We hear that all the time.
And my staff and I have talked about this, and we're going to, we want to springboard off this momentum and get people interested in planning for the future of McGrath State Beach. That includes, you know, new facilities, more restoration, more habitat for the birds that live on it.
Right, right. Because, I mean, over the years, it's, the infrastructure's deteriorated, as you've said earlier, and that's one of the things, I think, people have made comments, that this is such a great place, but we haven't seen the park been able to keep it up. And now I hear, even if it made a whole lot of, quote, excess, the money goes to Sacramento, doesn't all go to McGrath, and that's the hard part, I think, a lot of people see.
Correct. And there's a lot of parks that don't generate a lot of revenue, but deserve to be open and providing access.
Yeah. I mean, we, our own parks department, we deal with that here, that some pay for the other ones, and I know it's difficult. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
But Richard, your operating funds are not the concern, because the fees that are collected, you know, take care of the operating funds. It's just that one capital item that you need to take care of.
Correct. My operation of McGrath State Beach is actually done with three parks. We operate Emma Woods, San Buena Ventura, and McGrath State Beach with the same core staff. So there's no, you know, there's no savings by closing McGrath down. I still have the same staff, the same operating costs. There's minute savings with trash and things like that, but.
And Madam Chair, I just want to thank your staff and you and my staff, because, you know, we worked throughout the summer break, and we had, the media come from Los Angeles, from Calcal 9, from Channel 2, Channel 5, Channel 3, Alex Wilson, The Star. Everybody gave us a lot of attention, and I just want to thank your staff and my staff and the supervisor staff for helping out with the marketing of this, and individuals like Victoria and Cindy and numerous other individuals that helped us get to this point. So I just want to thank you and your staff.
Thank you.
I know it's always hard to call out your own staff members, but I know Bill Gallagher's done a great job for you.
Absolutely. And Lourdes on this side.
And Lourdes also.
And Tracy right next to you.
And thank you for your cooperation. Very much appreciated and the understanding how important a resource this is. Our last speaker card on this is Brian McDonald, council member, but representing himself today.
Good morning, Madam Chair, honorable supervisors. Mr. CEO, if you'll, he's hiding in the back there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. When we first heard as a city that McGrath might be closing, because this is in our city, we immediately started working towards options that might keep it open, not realizing that Supervisor Zaragosa was also going to jump to the challenge and form his own team, along with Assemblymember Williams, Supervisor Bennett. Thank you very much. So we started out on two different roads with the same ultimate goal in mind of keeping this park open for our community, for our residents, and the people that visit here. We were approached by some private capitalists who were interested in working with us to perhaps operate the park ourselves. We made the kind offer to Mr. Rozell and his staff of taking over the park. We were politely turned down, and I don't blame them. But that was one of the options that we had out there, and we pretty soon found out that both the Board of Supervisors and our city council were working towards the same ultimate goal. So we collaborated together, and there are always power in numbers, and I think we have formed a very strong team. And now it's not just a bunch of individuals from McGrath State Beach, it is the County of Ventura, which includes the city of Oxnard. I'm hearing potentially that the City of Ventura might be enticed to provide some money to us also for this effort. Tonight, I'll be asking my city council to consider setting aside up to $150,000 towards this effort. This has been kind of a moving target as we get approached the completion of it. The number seems to be going down. We were recently contacted through our mayor's office, from Mayor Tom Holden, by a private party who has pledged $50,000 of his own money to go towards this effort. So that helps all of us in that effort. And it's a very firm commitment. We have not released the name yet. He's a bit under the weather. We're waiting for him to feel better so we can come up and give him the proper recognition. But I am very comfortable. That's a firm, firm commitment with the commitment from the county. Hopefully, the City of Ventura will come in there. I think we are well on the road to keeping this jewel of the coast open. We, I'm asking our council to set aside a little bit extra, just because, you know, when you dig in 50-year-old soil, you never know what you're going to find. And so we want to make sure we have a little bit beyond the $500,000 necessary to do this job. I have had the opportunity to see the plans talked about by Mr. Rozell for the future of the park, and they are very nice looking, or restore the natural wetlands that are there, plus create a campground that will be available year-round, not subject to flooding, which will only enhance the viability of that park. I think the City of Oxnard, although I cannot speak on their behalf, but I believe that we would be in a position where we could potentially run the park, or the county may also do the same if it becomes necessary, so that this is an asset that is always open and available to our communities. It's not something that's going to go away. We're asking for money out of our major O, which is money that our citizens voted in to be used for special needs, parks, public services, things of that nature. And because it is a one-time deal, we're comfortable that, or I'm comfortable, that this is money that is going to go to a national cause, keeping our recreation source open for our community. With the flora and fauna that's available there, the wildlife, it's amazing that in the middle of a city of 200,000, or Ventura to the north, or the County of Ventura that has almost a million residents, 800, some odd thousand, that you can walk 50 yards from a campground, sit on the beach, and feel like you're absolutely in over nowhere, hearing no noise, no traffic, nothing but the natural sounds. So that's important to my community to keep that open. It's important to me to keep it open. I know it's important to Mr. Rozell, who's been very kind through this whole process, and it's been kind of a moving target, but I'm very confident that we're going to be very successful as a team, because we, and certainly Assemblymember Das Williams has been crucial in helping this whole group come together. And when it comes to future grants, the one thing that Mr. Rozell will be able to show, any granting agency is the community is behind me, the county, the city, the state, everyone is behind me. And I think that's always important to potential grantors on the future, that you have that much strong public support. So I thank you very much for your time and allowing me to speak here this morning, and I hope for a successful outcome on your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And since we have one more speaker coming up, so.
I just want to thank the council member real quickly, because I'm going to be there tonight to support you.
Thank you.
And I think that partnership, I want to mention again, you know, I really believe in partnerships with the state, the county, and the cities, and the residents. Joining together is really significant to get things done, and because we have to face the people on an eye-to-eye level, you know, where Sacramento doesn't, but we do, and I just want to thank you for.
Thank you. And it's just one of those things where your heart says this is the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
Yes, follow your heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Mr. Hints, our treasurer tax collector, got inspired and wanted to comment.
Thank you. I'm Stephen Hints. I'm speaking today as a private citizen. Sometimes you think that these closure lists are a lot of loud noise by the state to try and squeeze money out of local agencies. Five years ago, we went through the, a similar thing now with McGrath, but with another park, state park with which I'm associated. They mean business. Two weeks ago, I had a meeting with Ruth Coleman, the director of state parks, and they're letting contracts for fencing contractors to start fencing state parks in, starting in February and March. And they intend to close state parks. They don't have the money, and they have no funding source. I'm hopeful that McGrath will develop a cooperative association, a private 501(c)(3) association, similar to the park with which I'm associated. And I believe that the supervisors and the citizens of Ventura County need not think that they're being subjected into giving money for a state park that the state ought to support. The state cannot support the park. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. At this time, then I'll turn the meeting back over to the supervisor.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item, and again, this is going to be subject to the California, say, providing the funds of $250,000 to the same fund. So I'd like to make a motion that we.
Let me just, let me kind of, if you're talking about the $250,000 plus the fundraising and the city of Oxnard, it's all those combined?
The county, the city, the state, excuse me, going to provide $250,000, so I'm making this contingent upon them receiving those dollars, you know, to supplement.
Okay, but were you also contingent on the rest of the groups doing their piece, too? Because we're all going to be real short if we don't. I mean, I don't think they want to put money in if everybody else isn't going to do it. I mean, I would imagine when everybody's come to an agreement.
Well, I'm sure, Richard, but if we give the $50,000, that's $400,000, right? And, or do we drop the whole thing if Oxnard doesn't come through, or the private individual that hopefully is going to give us some money, or other people?
Well, to answer the question, if we don't have enough money, we don't have a project. So you could make a contingent upon the other sources. If I don't get the $250,000 from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, we don't have a project. That doesn't mean we can't find maybe other sources. Maybe another private donor could step up, maybe the City of Ventura can step up. But, you know, I'm committed to make this happen, so if you put a contingent on there, I'm not too concerned about that, because I'm not going to stop. I'm still going to find.
I think, I think probably the safest thing for us to do is not make a contingent upon Oxnard or whatever, but just contingent upon the project going forward.
Right, that's, that's.
Yeah, all the money. I don't care where it comes from, but it's.
That would be.
Project goes forward.
We pay. Project goes forward, we obviously don't want to give money.
That would be okay.
So that's the motion, and we have a second from Supervisor Bennett. Comments from the other board members? Just my congratulations to the great cooperation and working together. This is good government in the making here, and I'm proud to be a part of it. And I just have to comment, too, how nice it is to be able to go to the beach, but for good weather, I go to the East County.
Is there a beach out there, East County? Thank you. Thank you.
That passes unanimously. Our next item on our agenda is our National Preparedness Month resolution. But before we do that, and it's so appropriate that over here, over on my left, we have a piece of the Twin Towers as a commemorative from Sunday's ceremony that we had. So the public is welcome to come take a look at that. We're going to take a short break and then go back to our normal items on our agenda. Thank you.
...as potential of public health and agricultural emergencies within the county. And whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide coordinated effort to encourage individuals, families, and organizations to take simple steps to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools. And whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security will be working with organizations to highlight the importance of emergency preparedness and promote individual involvement through events and activities across the nation. And whereas Ventura County will be joining a wide variety of national, state, and local organizations, including the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, in educating the public about preparing for emergencies. And whereas Ventura County will be promoting the Ready Ventura County Campaign, which includes a local disaster preparedness website, social networking applications, and public service announcements. And whereas local cities, businesses, and other county departments will be engaging in additional preparedness activities in September to increase public and employee awareness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in proclaiming September 2011 as National Preparedness Month and further encourages all residents to take the opportunity to prepare for an emergency in their homes, businesses, and schools. And how many out there in the audience have their emergency kits already in the back of their car? Oh, yes. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Nannis, and come on down.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Laura Di Hernández. I want to thank the board for their support in this resolution today. And I appreciate the comments that were made regarding the Sunday, September 11th memorial. We've accomplished a lot in the last 10 years. We've spent over $22 million in homeland security grant monies administered through our sheriff's OES Grants Unit Office. And we've been able to improve our capabilities to respond to a major disaster significantly through the acquisition of vehicles and equipment and training and exercises. But I would like to say that the most important thing that we've been able to accomplish, and we saw this on Sunday, was the collaboration of the many stakeholders, partners, agencies in this county who've come together and worked together to make these kinds of things happen. I cannot take the credit for this. This was a committee effort of over 71 individuals and 25 agencies who made the 9/11 memorial service possible. And what I want to just state this morning is to recognize that committee will be coming back and offering a proclamation, a resolution, to recognize those committee members. I think it's well deserved. But again, it's a good example of how we've collaborated over the years, how we've grown as a community. And times of crisis, whether it's budgetary or a natural hazard, natural disaster, we manage to come together, and we can be very proud of that here in Ventura County. I think it's a type of collaboration, a level of collaboration, we don't see in other counties. And for that, we can be very proud. I want to recognize this morning some of the committees of the Emergency Planning Council who have stood up and helped with this effort. I think we've really made some good progress with the establishment of the Emergency Planning Council. And through that, the establishment of the committees, we've had really good work going on. We have, of course, the Public Information Education Committee, which is chaired by Cynthia Elliott and Bill Nash. Those were two key players in the development of the 9/11 ceremonies. I just spoke to Paul Grossgold out in the lobby area earlier, and he's getting ready to stand up his logistics committee with the help of some of the cities. Jeff Pratt and Jace Bergen from TO, Thousand Oaks, are chairing the Infrastructure Committee. And then we have Melissa Livingston and Ron Van Dyk, who chair the Strategic Planning Committee. Jim McGee and Barry Zimmerman are the chairs of the Mass Care Committee. And we have Dan Richards and Chief Michael Plant from Fire, chairing our Communications Committee. Bill Barato from VSCDA and Anne Di Martini from Small Business. And the water agencies are the chairs of our Business Recovery Committee. And Dr. Levin, of course, the chair of our Nuclear Planning Committee. And then we have our Plan Review Committee, which is chaired by a member of my staff, Dale Carnathan, and Steve Winter from the County Fire Department. So you can see that there's a lot of collaboration and a lot of work being done by everybody. And then, of course, our executive leadership of the EPC, Chairman Linda Parks and Vice-Chair John Zaragosa. And then we have, of course, Sheriff Dean and Chief Bob Roper and Ed Sotella from Oxnard City, who are part of our executive body. So I want to thank all of those members. I encourage you to keep up the good work, and we appreciate the continued support. Another comment, if I may, that you brought out during your comments regarding Sunday's event were the children. And for me, what I saw out there were our future first responders, the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts and the Eagle Scouts. All those out there were our first responders, our future first responders. I think we need to continue working through the schools, supporting our Public Education Committee and their campaign efforts to communicate the message about preparedness and the leadership roles that they can feel as we move on into our careers and into retirement. Finally, I just kind of want to shoot my own horn. I've been selected to represent FEMA Region 9 tomorrow at an Emergency Management Latino Summit in Washington, D.C. So I'll be leaving tomorrow to attend a two-day summit. FEMA Region 9, which I didn't realize, includes California, Arizona, Hawaii, Nevada, the American Samoa, Guam, Commonwealth of Northern Mariana Islands, the Republic of the Marshall Islands, Federated States of Micronesia. So I will be representing not only Ventura County but FEMA Region 9 at that Latino Emergency Management Summit. So thank you very much for your support.
I cannot pick the better person to represent, so congratulations on that. And it is so true that the youth are really, have been, you know, just through watching what happened with 9/11, have been inspired. I know I have one son that wanted to become a police officer, the other one a firefighter, and I know that that played a part in that, too. But also looking at this piece, you know, from the Twin Towers, this remnant, I feel like that would be a great tool to take to the classrooms, you know, historically, but also education-wise of preparedness. So thank you so much for what you do. And we'll get a picture of you. We can get a picture by the classroom.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would also like to thank Laura, you know, because she's going to be a great representative for us in Washington, D.C., and she's done an excellent job. She says she has 71 people working with her for this 9/11 ceremony, but we know that every group needs a leader, and you're that leader. So I want to thank you so much for your good work. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one other thing. Laura talked about, you know, things coming together and all this cooperation. And I just would like to recognize that there was a time period when she actively sought, what are ways that we can improve? And her willingness to question how they were doing things and to reexamine and be open and to try to keep changing that collaboration, I think it was the key to reinvigorating the collaboration in Ventura County. So I want to thank you and the professionals that you brought on to try to say, hey, there is a better way, and to be so open to doing that. So thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely. Do we need a motion on that? Are we, we're good? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Nannis. Our next item on the agenda, and I'll just note that we are running a little bit late. So for the Air Pollution Control Board folks, we have two more resolutions we'll do first, and then we'll go right to that. So, actually, three more resolutions. So our next one is Item Number 28. And this is a presentation of a resolution honoring a very special woman, Sharon Miller, for her generosity. And Sharon, would you come up to the microphone? I know you have family members. Feel free to bring them up there, too. Sharon dedicated a lot of time, effort, and funding to see that we have a kitty cottage, a place at our Animal Services Department, where our cats no longer have to be caged, but they can go into this separate cottage, this room, that's been decorated and very sweetly for the cats. A lot of scratching posts, lots of meat benches. I think we actually have a PowerPoint that shows some of that. But let me just read this resolution, and then Monica Nolan, our director, can help us get that PowerPoint up. It reads, "To Sharon Miller for her generosity in donating Miller's Kitty Cottage in honor of her daughter Kathy Jo. Whereas Sharon Miller has a long history of dedication and generosity towards animals and has worked diligently on behalf of homeless and abused animals by contributing regularly to several nonprofit animal rescue groups, including the Los Angeles Agura Animal Shelter, where I got my dog, and Ventura County Pet Pantry Program. And whereas Sharon's lifelong love for cats led her to devote countless hours and energy to help build a sanctuary for homeless cats in need of a new shelter at Ventura County Animal Services in Camarillo. And whereas, beginning with fundraising and finding the perfect architect and engineer to working with artists towards beautifying the shelter with a stunning mural, Sharon's enthusiasm, leadership, and compassion have been felt by all those who contributed to the cat sanctuary project from start to finish. And whereas, the result of Sharon's commitment to cats in need of a home is the beautiful Miller's Kitty Cottage, a comfortable 400-square-foot shelter that houses up to 20 cats and named in honor of Sharon's beloved daughter Kathy Jo, who passed away in 1994, and shared her deep love of cats. And whereas, an inspiration to all those who have had the pleasure of working alongside her, Sharon's extraordinary efforts on Miller's Kitty Cottage will improve the lives of homeless cats and benefit the many community members seeking to adopt a new furry friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Sharon for her outstanding dedication to animals in need and tremendous generosity and time to complete the Miller's Kitty Cottage for Ventura County Animal Shelter." And I know that it also allows for people to see cats and their real personalities outside of their cages and has increased and will continue to increase the adoption rate, which is our goal. So I'll come down there and present this to you if you have some words that you'd like to say. And I know we do have some great photos, including the one that we have up there now, too.
Yeah, I just have to say that this was actually my husband's idea. He's not here, but he said, "I think Camarillo could use a cat room like Agura's. Why don't you see about it?" So what I did is I just did the legwork, got all the people, made people say yes, and we got, it just came out beyond my wildest expectations, and it's a dream come true, really.
Thank you so much. You really appreciate it. It did. And do you have your auntie who would you like to get? I want to go ahead. Okay. All right. She's got a PowerPoint of this, the interiors. One, two.
So, yeah, I just wanted to show the board a little bit. This is where we started. This is what the main cat room looks like. It's 400 square feet. It has no windows. It has 40 cages inside of it. And although the cats are very clean, and they live, and they're well-fed, they're not very happy in here because it's not very conducive to being out in the open. We, as the budget situation goes, we wanted to have a sunroom for the cats. So this was in our mind, as far as the budget could go.
Looks like a big chicken coop.
Yeah. This is our sunroom. We were going to throw open a door and put a sunroom out there. And Sharon came along, and we put a poster up on this wall, the outside wall, and Sharon came along and said, "We can do better than that." And so Sharon said she got the architect, she got the engineer, she got the money, and she said, "Let's go." And we had the groundbreaking ceremony.
And there's little ears on her helmet.
Yes. They made me wear it. And in three short months, we got construction underway. And you can see that the building of it was doubled the size. And we have a 400-square-foot room with lots of windows.
Did she even help build it, huh?
Yeah, she even, she was the true driving force behind it. And she was out there with her construction hat and moved things along. And so, as you can see, this is the new room with lots of windows, with the doors. It fits right in. It's absolutely beautiful. It's the showpiece of the shelter right now, down to the roses. We had a volunteer actually donate a beautiful artistic birdbath that goes with it. So it's absolutely beautiful. This is moving day. The cats, after being, because we have to handpick the cats, they have to go through a two-week isolation period so that, make sure that they don't have diseases and they pass to each other. And it was a new process for training staff, too. But, so this was moving day, and everybody was a little apprehensive about everything. And, but, so.
Including the cats?
Including the cats. You can see them looking at each other. You can see staff going, "Can we really let them loose in a room?" So this was moving in. And this was our opening ceremony, which was on our, actually, the kickoff of our ASPCA Adoption Challenge. Lots of activity running around. We had our celebrities running around and the big to-do. And that day, we adopted 55 animals, and eight of them were the cats. And so that was the big to-do that day. And this shows you what the room itself is all about, where the cats are free, where there's lots of windows, the sun comes in, people can sit, the cats can come up to them, they can come up to the cats, and there's just freedom all around. And that's really what it's all about. And there are the murals. The murals themselves depict the cats, the cats depict the murals themselves. And when you walk into the room, the cats just basically attack you because they're just free and they're having lots of fun.
Friendly.
And, you know, they just love being out there. And this is really, speaks to, you know, the cats are really just happy being here. But if you really are going to lean six this, the measurement would not be the happiness of the cats. The measurement is this. How many cats are out the door? And what we can say is that all the cats that have gone in there so far have been adopted. So that's really.
Wow.
So what I want to say is that on behalf of the staff, the volunteers, the cats, and myself.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And she's not over with yet. Her generosity is not over with yet. And this is my 32nd plug. Our next adoption event is September 24th and 25th, and Sharon is giving out $20 coupons to Petco, to everybody who adopts an animal that day.
Get all your friends there.
Yes. 24th and 25th are the next adoption event, and she's giving out $20 Petco coupons.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Our next item on our agenda, we're going to pass on to Item 29. We're going to continue that until 1:00. And go now to Item 30, which is a presentation recognizing the 66th anniversary of the United Way of Ventura County. And Supervisor Zaragoza will be doing this one.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call up Dave and also our Chair of the United Way, Adam, to the podium. And I'd like to read this. It's a resolution for the Board of Supervisors of County of Ventura in recognition of 66th anniversary for Live United Month for United Way of Ventura County in the month of September. Whereas the Ventura County Board of Supervisors has declared September as Live United Month. And whereas, Live United Month is intended to highlight for the Ventura County residents of various programs and services provided by United Way of Ventura County that are designed to advance the common good of our community. And whereas, United Way County started at the war chest of Ventura County in 1945 and has been an integral supporter of health and human services needs in our community for 66 years. Whereas, United Way of Ventura County is focused on improving education, financial stability, promoting healthy lives, with a success in the future to be measured through the results that deliver positive community input to more Ventura County residents in need. And whereas, United Way of Ventura County is committed to providing support through community impact partnerships, delivering results for critical programs, which include 211 Ventura County and also VolunteerCounty.org, the Earn Income Tax Credit Program, the United Women's Leadership Council, the Young Leaders Society, the Latino Action Team, and more. And whereas, United Way of Ventura County has evolved over the 66 years from the war chest of Ventura County to the United Fund, to United Way of Ventura County, always with the purpose of improving lives and mobilizing the caring power of our communities. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors designates the month of September from this date forward to be Live United Month in Ventura County. And therefore, let it be resolved that Ventura County Board of Supervisors reaffirms its recognition of the social services needs of Ventura County residents and applauds United Way of Ventura County for the multiple ways the organization responds to the needs of every day of the year, and it has done for the last 66 years. And this is presented on the 13th day of September. And I'd like to present this to Adam and to Dave, and I'll go down. Do you have anything to share with us?
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. Good morning, Madam Chair, other members of the board, and Mr. Powers. It's always a pleasure to be at the Government Center for a special day like today. We're very pleased to receive the recognition from the Board of Supervisors in support of the United Way of Ventura County. It's been a particularly impactful year for us in many different ways, as the supervisor alluded to, our continuing support of the 211 program, VolunteerVenturaCounty.org, work of the Women's Leadership Council, the Young Leaders Society, our Latino Action Team, Ventura County Together, and the many ways that United Way makes a true difference in the community every day, supporting thousands of residents in Ventura County. I'd like to introduce our Board Chair, Adam Tenell, who's the Chief Operating Officer at Community Memorial Hospital, and ask him to share just a couple of comments with you.
Thanks, Dave. Supervisor Zaragoza, Madam Chair, and other members of the board, and Mr. Powers as well. We again appreciate this honor and this proclamation. And much has been said, I think, today about the reflection of 9/11 from 2001 and the 10-year anniversary, and caused me to think just briefly about 10 years ago from now on September 13th, after the 9/11 attack, and what we saw within our country. And I remember, out of that tragedy, seeing quite a bit of hope and also some unity. And regardless of differences and opinions and so forth, really a brotherhood and a reflection by the country as Americans on what matters most. And it's wonderful to be able to remember that event and to recognize that that spirit lives today. And as we've listened to all of the different happenings today that have taken place, and also this proclamation of living united, it's something that we reflect on, that we see as board members and as community members, that we focus on the areas of income, health, and education. So we appreciate this proclamation. We appreciate the recognition there. We each have an opportunity to volunteer our time and talents and to voice and to advocate. And so we appreciate this. And again, I thank you and recognition really to Dave as kind of our leader and CEO with the other staff members for the United Way, and an appreciation from the representation of Mr. Powers, I know Supervisor Parks, also a prior board member and Supervisor Zaragoza. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to share one other thing that United is going to be doing at CFC.
The day of caring that's coming up, October 1st.
What is it? October 1st. And that's another United thing that we're doing here in a partnership with the community to help out our residents. So I want to thank you for that. And I'd like to present.
Just one quick other plug. Our recognition, our Spirit of Community Partnership Recognition Luncheon is this Thursday. We'll have about 375 people in attendance. I know some of you plan to be there. That's about 100 people more than a year ago for this event. I think it really speaks to the recognition in the community of the importance of the social service sector and the work that's being done to support residents in Ventura County.
I just want to quickly take this opportunity to thank you, David, for your consistent leadership through tough times. I mean, from 2007 till now, everybody has struggled, and you have kept United Way on an even keel, and that's great. And I want to, you didn't have enough to do in life, I'm sure, with the hospital being, with the new hospital and everything else, so you were looking for something to do, right?
I'm happy to be a part of it.
But thank you very much. You know, if you want to get something done, you get busy people to do it, and that's the classic. So thank you for doing that also. I appreciate it.
Mr. Powers, do you have any comment?
Just real quick, to Supervisor Bennett's point, a few weeks ago, I noticed that the Star editorial recognized the United Way for, despite these tough economic times, actually exceeding their campaign goals.
Yeah.
And I think it's remarkable. And a tribute to Dave and his leadership and the whole board. And I thought every month was Live United Month. Congratulations.
Could the other representatives from United Way stand when they're recognized for their staff members? Hold on. Our media staff, here, the board members. And we have some other representatives here, too, but they have.
Madam Chair, I want to apologize for not introducing them. And what I'd like to go on is if we make a mistake, we pay a dollar. I owe a dollar for not doing it. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. I know Madeleine Hess is at everything. You're the Volunteer of the Year in my mind. My goodness. Our last set of resolutions before we go to APCB will be the presentation proclaiming September 2011 Alcohol and Drug Addiction Month. And I'm going to pass the baton over to Supervisor Law.
I'm going to try and do that. Second, 311. I'm going to try. Okay. Okay. I'm going to try and do that. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
And this is, every year we do this, because every year is important to continue to put a focus on what we need to do as a community in supporting alcohol and drug addiction. And recovery does happen. Recovery happens because people work at it, that people care about it, and we direct resources to it, and we continue to educate the public that recovery is possible, and it happens with good people with good intentions. Behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness. Substance abuse disorders are serious public health problems, as evidenced by 4.3 million people receiving treatment for substance use disorder. In 2009, 21.8 million Americans aged 12 or older were illicit drug users. Estimated 22.5 million, or 8.9% of the population, were classified with substance dependence or abuse. 25% of persons aged 12 or older participated in binge drinking, translating to 59.6 million people. And among those aged 50 to 59, the rate of illicit drug use has increased. Those boomers. 2.7%, 6.2% in 2009. That really isn't funny, but there is that age group that we know had, you know, perhaps a different philosophy. All Americans have the opportunity to access health through provisions within the Affordable Care Act and Mental Health Parity and Addictions Equity Act. Oh, heavens. Aim to improve physical and emotional health while ensuring people will receive the care they need at a more reasonable cost. So it really is essential that we continue to recognize this month, to educate our policymakers, our friends, family members, healthcare providers, our community, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same importance as any other health condition. And that's our emphasis. So it is my pleasure to present this on behalf of the board, step down and present this to our Behavioral Health Department, our Alcohol and Drug, and Patrick, and all the good people behind the scenes who do the good work in our community on a day-to-day basis. And this year's theme is Join the Voices for our friends, family members, healthcare providers, our community, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same importance as any other health condition. And that's our emphasis. So it is my pleasure to present this on behalf of the board, step down and present this to our Behavioral Health Department, our Alcohol and Drug, and Patrick, and all the good people behind the scenes who do the good work in our community on a day-to-day basis. And this year's theme is Join the Voices for Recovery. Recovery benefits everyone. I'll step down to present this if you'd like to. Patrick, and please say who's with us. I know we've got Linda and Dan.
Yes. Thank you Supervisor Long. This is Patrick Zarate with Alcohol and Drug Programs, Behavioral Health. Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Powers, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here today and for your support for the community of people who support positive change and recovery every day in Ventura County. And as Supervisor Long pointed out, if they don't mind standing, we have quite a few people We wanted to share with you some reflections of patients that your Alcohol and Drug Program cites and programs, the patients that they serve, some voices of recovery. Here's some statements from people we serve. Recovery is important to me because I'm a better person sober. It means having the opportunity to improve myself and become a better person. Recovery means raising my kids and being a good mother. I can smile today knowing how far I've come, and I look forward to my future. Recovery is having a second chance at life. It's having the support, hope, and optimism to rebuild my life from the shattered pieces it once was into the wondrous journey it is today. Finally, we do have some good news. We've turned a corner in the science of treatment and recovery. On August the 11th of this year, the American Medical Association's American Society for Addiction Medicine redefined addiction. After two decades of advancements in neuroscience, ASAM tells us that addiction must be defined by what's going on in the brain. At its core, addiction isn't just a social problem, or a moral problem, or a criminal problem. It's a brain problem whose behaviors manifest in all these other areas. Many behaviors driven by addictions certainly are real problems and sometimes criminal acts. But the disease is about brains, not about drugs. It's about the underlying neurology, not the outward actions. Hearing the words of those in recovery that we just did, along with the science-based approach in regards to the etiology of the disorder, gives us renewed hope in our efforts to fully accept individuals in their struggles with addictions towards acceptance and health. As Supervisor Long stated, treatment does work and recovery does happen.
Thank you Patrick. Can I have a little hand though? Do you have for us?
Yes. We have for the board and for the CEO, a latest publication about what the sign says about substance use disorders, as well as a little flyer, which Patrick will say something about. Right. Our plug this morning is next week, you're all invited to Our Recovery Happens, and we have an annual event every year. It's Wednesday, September the 28th, at the Ventura Beach Marriott, and we have a nationally acclaimed expert on trauma-informed response to addiction and recovery.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Just this to you, and thank you for bringing this forward, and to all of you for being present and all of the work you do day-to-day out there making a difference in these lives. Recovery happens because you are committed to make it happen. So thank you all.
Yes. And I know that, I know that they wanted to get a photo with staff, is that right?
That would be great.
Can we do that?
Okay.
And then, as staff, please come forward and let's get a photo. And I know that the Air Pollution Control Board is all here and ready to go, and they'll probably throw me off of that board when I tell them that we have a quick kind of administrative matter right after this that will go very quick.
Thank you all.
One and two. Stand by. I break the camera.
Your good work. And we'll quickly move to our 10:30 a.m. time certain item 33. This is a public hearing granting a private wastewater pipeline franchise, and I believe we have already had a vote allowing for this. And Mr. Philiger, if you could do a very brief report?
Yes ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, this is a private wastewater franchise to howling nurseries. We ask that you open a public hearing. Take any speakers. If there are no speakers, there are no questions.
And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, and I don't have any speaker cards. Do you, Ms. Clerk? No, you do not.
Close the public hearing and we request that you adopt the resolution granting the franchise.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Do we have a second on that motion? Yes, we have a second, and that's from Peter Foy. If we could all please vote, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations. And if the air board would like to, I'd come on up. I apologize for our tardiness. We're going to come back to our Board of Supervisors meeting for September 13th, 2011, and go right to item 29, which is Discuss and File a Report of Investments, including market values for investments for the month ending July 31st, 2011. And good afternoon.
Well, I come up here and say the same thing every month, because nothing changes that quickly. When you have a recession like we had, it takes a long time, a lot of product in the real estate market to distribute. And so we're sort of status quo. Interest rates are low, and I think you remember the last time the stock market, I said it's going to go like this, and don't worry about your 401Ks. And nothing goes up forever, and we had a real excellent uptick from 2008. And you always have corrections. And so if it were an easy game, there wouldn't be a million people on Wall Street working. If you don't have any questions, there's three items I do have I'd like to bring up. First of all, since the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I've been thinking a lot about retirement. And, you know, there's a scenario to work for a month or two, and a scenario to work for three years. And I can tell you that I have made up my mind that positively, pay period 24, November 26, will be my last day. That's item number one. Item number two, now you're worried and all that, I want to tell you not to worry. We have a treasurer tax collector who watched investments on the Railroad Museum Fund. We have Don Hanson. We have Bertha. We have Ty Ralston. We have plenty of backup. The organization will be fine. You're just used to seeing this gray-haired old man. When the judge took over, he even did a survey. He took the junior managers and had them project what they would do if Don Hanson and I left. And I tell you this to console you, because I know you're worried because I'm leaving. And their interpretation was that I'd be easy to replace, Don would be a little harder. So the organization itself is in good shape, very good shape. The third point I'd like to make is, I'm not a big one on retirement parties and cookie and cake and that kind of stuff. In fact, my wife will tell you, I don't even like birthday presents, I don't want Christmas presents. I tell the kids, just go buy something for yourself. I know you would like to say thank you, and you have. In 2004, Judy Michaels took me aside, and she said, don't worry about what's going on in your office. The Board of Supervisors has 100% respect for you, and they think you're a real professional. So every time I've come up here, every one of you have genuinely said things you meant. A lot of times what bothers me in life, people say things about other people to make themselves look good. At no time did I ever think that any of your comments were anything but from the heart. So it's kind of like Mary Poppins, a teaspoonful of sugar. You've given me wonderful comments every time I've come. And I know that one Tuesday night a month, we've, it's been fun for me to come home and talk about the good things that you've said. But the most important thing, you've given me a lot of respect, and that's all I really care about. I would like to meet with you for maybe a 10-minute exit interview before I leave. I, that's the way I'd like to do things, the six of you, and I of course will not leave out the Queen Mother, who has helped me so many times get to a time, 10 o'clock time certain at 1 o'clock. Just kidding. No, I don't mind. But anyway, from the bottom of my heart, hear me. Thank you for all those wonderful Tuesday nights. I really don't have much more to say. I think I need to go get a little fresh air, because I had a little more to say than normal, and I had to wait three hours. But honestly, thank you. That's okay. Thank you for all the nice, well-meant, respectful remarks. Thank you.
That is very unexpected, and I know that you are going to be very missed. And while you may not want any kind of recognition through a party, we can't help ourselves but to shower you with our appreciation. You are very much appreciated, and we thank you. And it is a surprise, because I know that you have this in your blood. You would never want to retire forever, I know, but there are certainly other things in life. But just so much appreciate the work that you have done.
I know it. I know it. And I'll hi- the presidents, Frank Shillow, Maggie, John Flynn, Johnny, Marty, everyone's been wonderful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hanson? Mr. Hanson, are you going to be back in the boardroom? Or is this it?
I'm not sure. That's yet to be determined.
This is it, maybe, huh?
There's a couple other meetings, but yet to be determined. But I'll be working here until November 26th.
Okay. Madam Chair, I also want to, I want to thank you tremendously, and I've known you for a couple of years, but it's just been an honor and a pleasure to speak to you because you know your material, you know your work, and you're very sincere, you know. So I personally am going to miss you tremendously.
I'm too sincere sometimes.
Well, I think it's always been good. You've always been honest, and been clear about what you, what you believe and what you, you've never hid anything. But at the same time, you've been the greatest professional, and you have made this county a whole lot of money.
Seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
To be exact.
Seven hundred and fifty-nine.
And we could have never done that.
I've eaten late 146 times, and I'll never eat them.
That's right.
Supervisor Long?
Mr. Hanson, thank you.
Yes. I know you're walking out the door, and you don't want to hear this, but I have, I have trusted your performance and your reports and your work, 110% plus. And I appreciate that you have been an independent, both in your truth to power, but also your work, and I think that's a valuable piece that we need to carry forward for the future. So I'll certainly be scheduling to meet with you. Thank you.
I appreciate it, and I don't really hand you the baton and you spread the word, so thank you.
Mr. Powers?
Just lastly, while I, just to echo, you've made the county money, but you've also protected the county during very difficult times. And that's something to be very proud of. You've helped a lot of services here. And we're also one of the few counties that actually has a high bond rating here for our investments, one of the few- has a high bond rating here for our investments, one of the few counties in the state that has that, and that's because of your excellent work.
Yes, conservative and also a man who loves his job, which is just an inspiration to.
The most interesting story is when I first started, everybody wanted to know why I was getting 1% less than Orange County. What was I doing wrong? And I just kept thinking, wait till the market turns. So thank you very much.
I think the one thing is, there's no question you're the best, but people have to understand you're probably the best in the country, and that's a big thing to say, but I've seen the reports on other, and you are, so thank you so much again. Enjoy. Thank you for letting us have him as long as we did.
Okay, can we have a motion to receive and file that investment report?
Retirement piece off.
Yeah, let's just say no.
Motion from Supervisor Long, second Supervisor Sarah Gozett. Please vote. And our next item on the agenda, as we go numerically for a change, is item 43. I'm sorry, I got that wrong, didn't I? Did I? We had the Workforce Investment Board, didn't we?
Correct.
Sorry, please come forward. Workforce Investment Board.
I was ready.
Okay, thank you, Matt, and I'm trying to learn my numbers all over again.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mr. Powers, my name is Talia Barrera. I am with the Workforce Investment Board of Ventura County, and item 40 before you is a recommendation to reappoint four current members in good standing to the Workforce Investment Board for their two-year term. They are Jim Fall with Hewitt Solars in Westlake, Victoria Jump with Area Agency on Aging from Ventura, Alex Rivera, 805 Bispros in Camarillo, and Nancy Williams with Southern California Edison in Ventura. I'll be glad to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? I know we have a motion from Supervisor Long, and a second from Supervisor Bennett. Please vote. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for coming back. And now, the item before us is item 43.
I'm Chair Parks, members of the Board, CEO Powers. Matt Carroll with the County Executive Office. Agenda item 43 this morning, request your Board approve the draft grand jury responses prepared on behalf of your Board by the CEO's Office, as well as those responses prepared by agency and department heads under your jurisdiction. In the 2010-11, 2010-2011 grand jury report, there were 11 reports produced. Seven of them were specific to county government. Five required responses either by your Board or agency or department heads that you're responsible for. Those five were the bullying in the workplace report, which was report number three. It required responses from your Board, which we've drafted, the auditor controller, and optionally the HR director. Now, we've combined the HR director's response with that of your Board, so you'll see a single response for both of those in your packet. We also have report number four, which was inmate processing and suicide prevention in the jail, and there were responses required by the sheriff, the district attorney, and the healthcare agency, and we have representatives of the healthcare agency here answering questions you may have. Report number five, emergency communications interoperability, required responses by the sheriff and the chair of the Emergency Planning Council, which is the chair of your Board, so we prepared a brief response there. We have the elections process, which again had one recommendation that required a response from your Board, and we prepared that, and it's in your packet. And then we had under enrollment in Proposition 36, which was report number seven. It required responses from the Board, the healthcare agency, and optionally by the probation department, and they did prepare a response, and it's in the packet here before you this afternoon. So at this point in time, as we've done in the past, we'll take any comments and make those changes to either the ones we've prepared by your Board or the agency or department head can respond to those. We've also asked, and I know in some cases, the elected officials that helped prepare theirs, if you have any questions along those lines, we tried to get them here today, but we know the schedule's been a bit fluid. So with that, we're open to any questions or comments on your Board.
Does the Board have any comments on the responses? Not hearing any?
I'd like to make one comment, and that is, it's more an observation. I have appreciated that recently, in the last year or two, the grand jury has, the grand jury's reports, in my mind, have been more meaningful, more appropriate. They've been, I feel like they clearly tried to point out things. At the same time, I recognize that the grand jury, from a grand jury's perspective, what you have difficulty, what a grand jury always going to have difficulty doing is to try to measure the degree that there is something going on. And so like with the bullying, you know, there's issues, but is it pervasive? Is it, you know, what is it? That it's, in my mind, is to roll the grand jury to bring some credibility to say, these are some credible things that you should look at. And a few years ago, I think the grand jury lost track, and their reports didn't have as much credibility as they have lately. So to the members of the grand jury here, I want to say I appreciate the fact that the grand jury is playing what I think is the more appropriate role in keeping us alert and on our toes and looking at things, and at the same time, respecting the fact that there's a limit to what the grand jury can find out in their initial investigations, and that's what the responses are for. So overall, I'd just like to make that comment.
I also appreciate the topics that they chose, very important ones. Nothing's more important than making sure you have integrity of your elections, for example, looking into the jails, and I appreciate the fact that they are willing to go there and do research and give us more information and help us to implement changes where we think it will make the most effect. So thank you for that. Supervisor Long?
And I agree with that. Give us the opportunity to, in our responses, to acknowledge where we can do a better job, and I think the CEO and the CEO's staff stepped up on the issue related to concerns with bullying, whether identified reports or the issue brought to the grand jury. Not a question of whether it's legitimate or not. I think it's more the question of, as was said in the report, with a workforce of the members we have and the human beings that we all are, it's better for us to be proactive in response to the issues obviously brought to the grand jury, and in good faith, to put steps in place that are now going to be recommended and followed through on. So my frustration with the Prop 36 report is, has been said before and will probably continue to be said. I think that the grand juries have all agreed with the Board that, at least philosophically, that we are a better community if we are able to provide treatment and intervention and support for those who have, are substance abuse offenders, and to have a process in place that supports them so that they get off of that path. So it's, as is identified in this report, again, it's a matter of resources, and it's another clear example of an initiative enacted by voters who care about caring about people, but unfortunately didn't identify funding sources for the sustainability of the effort. So I appreciate, again, having that brought forward for the public review and discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Parks. Yes, important topics all that the grand jury raised, and just to expand a little bit on the bullying, that is a very important topic, and we appreciate you bringing it forward. From, I believe, our Board's standpoint, the CEO's Office, and our management team here, I think that's one of the most important things we do as leaders here, is create a good, open work environment where people feel safe and protected, and they can be open about issues of where we can improve. So we appreciate you bringing it forward. As you can see in our response, we don't feel it's pervasive, and we do have systems in place to respond, but there's always things we can do to make things better, and as you suggested, enhancing some of our policies, for example, enhancing our training to make sure everyone is aware regularly of how they can report such issues, and starting an 800 line, which will allow even anonymous calls, because we want to make sure everyone, if it is happening, it's anathema to what we do here in the county, and we want to put an end to it right away. So we very much appreciate you bringing it up and your good suggestions.
Supervisor, very good.
I also want to thank the grand jury for bringing the, especially the bullying concerns, and I had an opportunity to talk to our CEO and to share with me some of the procedures that he's going to implement or strengthen, you know, to get our employees to assist us in correcting any concerns that our employees might have. So all the other processes that you recommended are also excellent things that we should work on, but I think the bullying one is a really good one that I'm sure that our CEO is going to work on and assist our employees with that, and also with that, and also our supervisors. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I'd move to adopt the reports that we have and include appreciation to the grand jury for their service in terms of presenting their reports to us, and again, compliment them for, I think, a new higher standard that they follow. I remember a few years ago, we had some reports that had actual factual errors coming in grand jury reports, and that's been eliminated, I appreciate.
And a lot of focus on a real dynamic titles to their reports.
So anyway, that'd be my motion.
We have a motion from Supervisor Bennett, and a second from Supervisor Foy. You please vote. Well, Matt passes unanimously. Thank you for your good work. Thank you for your service, too. Our next item then on the agenda, I think, will also be Mr. Carroll, and this is going to the approval of our 2011 to 2016 strategic plan.
Yes, thank you, Chair Parks. Agenda item 44 does a couple things here this afternoon. It first requests your Board formally approve, again, the countywide strategic plan, and that includes the county mission statement, the values, the guiding principles, strategic goals, and the supporting objectives and measures which are contained in that plan. It also requests your Board Director Office to return in 18 months with a status report on how we're doing with those objectives and measures, and give you some sense of how we're doing. And then in the 18 to 24-month time period, direct our Office to return with updates as appropriate to the plan at that point in time. And as I mentioned last time, a couple months ago, we certainly can adapt that timeframe if there's a sea change between now and then, or major change, we can come back with updates prior to that point in time. So it also requests, so those are the three requests. We originally brought this to your Board, I think it was July 26, and at that time, we went through the plan in detail, and I'm not going to do that again. Each of your offices provided feedback, and we're very appreciative of that feedback. We genuinely feel the plan is much better for it. Some of the areas we struggled with the most, focus area number three, and what we're doing for seniors, and there was a real challenge there, and your Board was actively engaged, and I think gave great feedback there, and those sections are much stronger as a result. But I'll just walk through verbally a summary of the changes. We don't have a presentation here today, but again, although the schedule is kind of fluid, we have as many agencies and department heads if you have specific questions in particular areas. But in summary, as Attachment 2 indicates on the Board letter of the day, we've made minor changes throughout the plan and some significant changes. First of all, in the plan's guiding principles, we've added language based on your Board's request to strengthen the need to be business and constituent friendly, and I know that was a strong feeling among multiple of your Board. Beginning in focus area number one, which was our good government focus area, we added additional language on the concept of transparency in our communications objective. We had an objective there to improve our communications, and your Board felt the transparency aspect that needed to be brought out as well. In focus area number two, which was our focus area on county workforce, your Board was questioning some of the objectives or measures we had for recruitment, and you recommended we have one that encapsulated or measured the time it took to fill a recruitment, so we added that measure in there to make that area stronger. Moving on to focus area three, and again, that's one where we got our majority of feedback. That's our land, environmental use, infrastructure focus area. We reworked the entire focus area statement to more accurately reflect our intentions as well as our need to protect both private property rights as well as the common good, and we received comments on both aspects from your Board in that area. In this same focus area then, we reworked the key message for strategic goal number one, which deals with land use policies and programs and agricultural land use and economic viability. We also added two new objectives in this area, dealing with consistent implementation of mitigation measures and encouraging the dedication of open space. So those were two new objectives on strategic goal number one. In support of these new objectives, we also added three new measures and modified two other measures. Also, again, in focus area number three, for our strategic goal number two, which deals with public facilities and protecting the community and the environment, we added new objective number six, which deals with pesticide use and integrated pest management. We also added a new measure to support this objective.
And before you leave that, while we're on that page 22, up at the top, it's not something that, called out before, but you know, as I was reviewing this, just under objective four, at the very top, it says initiate, and we added the word initiate, a public information program involving development and materials and direct outreach to unincorporated communities. At the very top of page 22? I just would like to call out that direct outreach to unincorporated communities. We don't have to change the language or anything, but I just would assume and hope and expect that we're all in agreement that would be direct that outreach to the unincorporated communities through the appropriate supervisor's offices, so that supervisors are involved in that outreach into those communities.
All right, continuing on in focus area number three, the strategic goal number three, which was our energy and sustainability-related strategic goal. We added two new objectives dealing with broadening the watershed protection district's mitigation tree nursery program, and also an objective for providing incentives for alternative energy use-related projects. We also added two new measures to support those new objectives. And then continuing on with our last changes in focus area number three for strategic goal number four, which is our water resource-related strategic goal, we added a new objective encouraging the use of reclaimed water and two new measures in support of this objective on reclaimed water. Moving on to focus area number four, which is our community well-being focus area, we added a new objective to decrease emergency department wait times, which was a recommendation or request from members of your Board. Also in focus area number four for strategic goal number three, which deals with individuals, family, and self-sufficiency, we added additional language in our key message on our aspirations and goals for seniors. We talked about that. For this same strategic goal, we added two new objectives, one dealing with cow works and workforce investment goals, and the other in the areas of seniors. And in support of these two new objectives, we added eight new measures, and primarily in the seniors area, we added eight new measures of program aspects that can really benefit helping them maintain dependency. And then finally, in focus area number five, the public safety area, we add a new measure to track the number of mentally ill in our jails, which was consistent with some of the actions we're taking and a recommendation by your Board. So again, we have agency and department heads here. If there's any other questions in any other area, and I again thank you for your active involvement in this. The plan is much better for it, and with that, we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Not a question, a comment. This is a good start. Somebody could always look at it and say, this isn't in there, this should be in there. You can never make this comprehensive enough, and you always can also make it too comprehensive. Trying to strike that balance and trying to figure that all out is, I mean, that's the art of this, and you have to use common sense as we get there. But at least we have something that is one more step in trying to say, we want to keep this organization dynamic. We want to keep this organization always ready to change, always ready to adapt, and that those people in the organization that just want to say, hey, that's how we always do it, we're not going to think about improvement, that's not the culture. that's not the culture that we need to have if we want to be the, the kind of top-performing organization that we all want to be proud to be associated with and be working in. So thank you very much. I appreciate this.
I would also just give my appreciation to you and your staff for working to take input and coming up with some good ideas and a little bit of looking outside the box where we can. Appreciation, I see Mr. Pratt is here, that he allowed for the expansion of the, we've added in a goal or an objective to broaden the watershed protection district's mitigation nursery to include native trees that can be used in public projects, a neighborhood tree planting program, which intertwines with our climate action plan, too. But the idea that we have a resource there and we can expand on it and use it, I thought that was a, a nice addition. Also, I know Supervisor Foy mentioned the issue of property rights and just, not only just property rights, but you know, as a government entity, we need to be conscious of the rights of others in everything we do. So you know, while we've called that one out, there's certainly, you know, that is part of our mission is to ensure that we protect people's rights, and there are many of them. So thank you for your work on this. I look forward to seeing this continue, you know, it's a living document, so we can make changes, perhaps yearly, we can take a look at it, and then also being able to call to it as we, you know, put together our board letters and say what goals this may, may implement. And then finally, just being able to have that measurement, so we, we can come back and see how we are achieving our goals, and maybe some can come off the list because we've achieved them and others that we're still seeking. So good job.
Absolutely.
Supervisor.
Matt, I just, I want to thank you too, because one of the biggest concerns that I had was the business friendly, helping the constituent, and somehow, somewhere, I'm not sure, because of this or whatever, but the concerns have really narrowed down to a minimum now, because I was getting quite a few of those concerns, but I think this is going to help us tremendously in, in dealing with the public and making sure that, that we answer their concerns and making sure that we're consistent in, in our policies that we have. So I want to thank you for that.
All right.
And all the agencies. I want to thank you.
Just real quick, and Matt, you did a great job on this. This is also really going to help going forward with the Service Excellence Council, the Performance Improvement Program, Catherine Rodriguez and Elaine Crandall, and the whole Service Excellence Council and the managers are going to really work to get this data back, and I think are eager to report back to your board these new projects and the new outcome measures that are called for in the plan. So making a very using, meaningful document.
Yeah, and Supervisor Long, did you also?
Yeah, thank you. Why, thanks for the work. I know there's a tremendous amount of work done behind the scenes and a lot of effort put into this and a lot of buy-in to it. Appreciate, we'll get a report back in 18 months, that this is a guiding document. This is, this does not in any way dilute this, this board's role in the policymaking and the direction. In fact, it helps us, I think, in, in guiding some of that with the managers and the agencies. So first time we've had something this comprehensive for the county, and, and again, I'm sure a piece that will be put up on the website and accessible for the public to be able to look at, and, and, and we will, it is that living document, and it should be.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Matt, and also, I appreciate you adding in back some of those things. I know it's hard to try to bring all pieces from all these different people together and make it, because at the end of the day, we live in a very diverse economy in this county with a lot of diverse people and a lot of diverse needs, and so trying to balance that is, is going to be very important in this. But I think we've tried to bring some of it together. I mean, there's no question that we still have some of that diversity in, in thinking, but I do appreciate you trying to add some of these, especially the property rights, because we are a very restrictive county, we've got to make sure we still balance that and still have the ability to create jobs in this county, still want to bring business so people can enjoy the life that we all have, the opportunity to be here. So I appreciate you putting it all together. Thanks for you and your staff.
And I also just want to express appreciation to the board. I know that when this first came forward, we were looking at whether to continue or move forward, but we've got five pages of changes that we've put into, and I think it's a better document for it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
And I would like to recognize the, the agency and department side, they did the heavy lifting on this, along with Elaine Crandall, and, and it couldn't have been done without your support, but they did all the heavy lifting to get it to this point, so.
And it really was a good exercise from where it started, and you know, put some teams together, some department heads that may not have worked with others in the past as well, or as much, so gave an opportunity for more silo breaking and collaboration.
Holding hands.
Holding hands.
We did almost break into kumbaya at one point.
Kumbaya. We could please vote? And that is a 5-0.
Thank you again for your lead.
Okay, then with that, I believe we have item 45, which is Supervisor Bennett's appointment.
I'd like to move that we appoint Paul McGee to the planning commission, recognize the great service of Leo Molitor, who's been the planning commissioner the whole time I've been here on the Board of Supervisors. Paul McGee, I think, is ably qualified to follow in Paul's, in Leo's footsteps.
I'll second the motion, having worked with Paul, very good recommendation.
Yeah, head of the Civilian Conservation Corps.
Could be a strong, strong leader there.
One of the most organized people I've ever had, you know. His staff used to laugh, he'd never had a scrap of paper on his desk, you know.
Very, very, he'll be good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I found him to be really good to work with also, and very much appreciated the good work that Leo did. I know my commissioner learned a lot from him, too, and worked well. He was great on the commission. And with that, the motion passes unanimously. And if I'm, we could have a receive and file of our correspondence, agenda items 46 through We have a motion for Supervisor Foy, a second from Supervisor Long, and it's unanimous.
I have one special.
Yeah, I hate to end this meeting. Is there anything else you want to talk about? All right, then we stand adjourned.